Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 10th, 2008 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, could we call the roll?
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Draymond.
Here. Could we ask you about the flag salute? Who is our leader?
Council member Yusefian.
This is member Yusefian.
Please stand and face the flag, put your hand on your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which is presented by Pastor John Jackson of the Glendale Church of the Brethren.
I ask you all to pray with me. Dear God, we ask you to bestow blessings upon this honorable council meeting. We thank you for the wisdom that is in this room and for everyone who is gathered here. As we live in difficult times, we know that many today are suffering from higher costs for gas, food, and health care. But we are so thankful to live here in the city of Glendale where so many of our amenities are close at hand that we do not have to travel far. We thank you for the farmers' market and the grocery stores that provide us with an abundance of food, and we thank you for the hospitals and other health care providers, including Glendale healthy kids that help us mitigate the health care costs. For all those who are suffering through job loss and looking for new work, we are thankful that Glendale has a vibrant economy that is brought about by the actions of this council. While we know that the budget must be balanced, we pray that you give wisdom to each of our council members so that they might set priorities in order that Glendale might further grow. We pray also for those who are suffering from the basic necessities of life, and pray that all of our abundance we might share with them. For we know that in such ways that we will be blessed by God, and that as everyone is cared for, so shall we all prosper, in God's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, could we have your report?
Agenda for the June 10th, 2008, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 5th, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. The first item?
First item, a presentation on appointments, is the agenda preview for the meeting of June 17th, 2008.
And we go to Bob McFaul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, on June 17th, we're beginning at 2:30 in the afternoon with a report from the Director of Planning regarding amendments to the downtown specific plan. This will be a joint meeting between the Glendale City Council and the Redevelopment Agency. At 6 o'clock, there will be another special joint meeting, this one between the City Council, Redevelopment Agency, and the Housing Authority, and this will be to hear a report from the Director of Community Development and Housing regarding proposed smoking prohibitions and limitations on second-hand smoke as they may apply to agency and authority-owned properties. In the City Council meeting, there will be a number of options of ordinances to be considered for adoption that council will be taking action on this evening, providing direction. But other than that, in the notation of the special joint meeting, there will be no further action plans.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul. Next item, please.
Next item under four is City Council and Staff Comments.
Council member Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We touched on this a little bit briefly last week, and although we're going to be discussing the budget later on this evening, what I'd like to do would be to have an item placed on the agenda, and that is either a resolution or an official act of direction by the City Council to interface with the presiding judge of the Superior Court located across the street with regard to the scheduling of our police officers who are subpoenaed for trial, and in particular, the traffic cases, where I think our offices are most often called in. And in particular, I'd like to address the issue of permitting the traffic violators the opportunity to have an officer subpoenaed into court and to wait until his testimony is over, a verdict is rendered in the case, and then at that point, request traffic school from the judge. I think it's an extreme waste of our officers' time, which is overtime, and perhaps encourage develop a resolution or directive from the City Council to encourage a judge to force that defendant to make an option to elect traffic school at a much earlier stage in the proceeding, rather than after our officers have been subpoenaed and are either present in court or actually have to go through their testimony, and then give the violator an option for traffic school.
And that would relate to overtime?
Overtime, specifically in the Police Department. Is that, Mr. Howard, do you understand where I'm going with that?
I do. I do.
Well, I think that's a fine idea. I think we should do that. Let's find a time when we can arrange that, if we could, please. Did you have anything else, councilman?
No, thank you.
Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to give the council a report. I think I and Mr. Quintero went to the League of California Cities meetings that was held up in Northern California this year, and I went to several conferences that was being held. Some of the sessions were very interesting. I think both Mr. Quintero and I were at the session that dealt with green buildings and sustainable buildings and so on and so forth. And as we attended the first meeting that dealt with the general session, there was talk about possibly the state of California coming back and borrowing their one-time $1 billion. And so they kind of warned us that be prepared, the state, in order to balance their budget, they may come and exercise their first option, which is borrow $1 billion, and they're supposed to pay it back in three years, but the word was, don't wait for the payback. So we may be looking at that. The other thing was that I also took an opportunity to go to a seminar about converting food waste into energy, and that was an interesting seminar. This is a plant that, in conjunction with the EPA, has been put together in the city of Santa Monica. Basically, what they do is they collect all the food during the preparations, or any excess food that's left over during preparation, they take it to this plant, and also any unused food. Any leftovers on the plate has to be collected separately because they have to heat it for pathogens, to kill the pathogens. Apparently, we have pathogens when we have stuff we put in our mouth. They heat that, and then they grind it all down, they add a little bit of liquid to it, and they put it in this container, which they call it a digester. They actually have bacteria that digest that food. It generates methane gas, which they use to create power, and after it's all finished and digested, what comes out, it's actually composting material, which, believe it or not, they sell for $300 a cubic yard. That's a lot of money. And they have a lot of use for that. All the growers that growing that type of the food that is done in holistic way, they come and buy the stuff. That has caused city of Santa Monica to reduce their trash pickup and also to reduce the amount of trash that they put in their landfill by 20%. So the information's available. I brought the information to Mr. Zern, and I asked him to kind of look into that. There is another facility similar to this in University of Davis that they're doing. So there is a lot of research being done on that, and several cities, much smaller than city of Glendale, are doing that, which I thought that may help us with our landfill since it's filling up much quicker. We may be doing that. So that's my report. I'll leave a little bit for Mr. Quintero to give you.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. We appreciate it.
By the way, he did give a check as a part of the Latino Caucus for $10,000. We didn't get any of that, so he just keeps it for somebody else, yeah.
Perhaps we'll hear about his caucus in a moment here. Thank you for your report, Mr. Quintero.
Well, first of all, let me say I did not give a $10,000 check to anyone. The Latino Caucus did.
Mr. Quintero, I don't think many of us thought you did.
Well, this was an excellent conference. It really had. It was kind of, you wanted to sit in one, you know, kind of room, listen for a while, and then go on to the next. They were all running concurrently. But one of the issues that's striking is obviously the lack of water in the state of California, and they did an extensive survey talking about the California Delta, although I'm not sure that the city of Glendale specifically participates in that. But overall, there's definitely a drought in the state. And so one of the things that I was thinking about as we were, I was listening to the presentation, is where are we on our concept to try to use less water in our lawns and so forth? I know we were going to start working on the possibilities of doing something other than a green lawn, so I don't know where that is, but hopefully, Hassan, you know where we might be. I mean, we're...
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. We are actually scheduling this, we have scheduled this item to come before the City Council for landscape ordinance reforms in July. I can give you the date.
Right, no, that's good. That's good. I knew we were fairly close to completing it, because I do think that's important. I think so much water goes into green lawns. Then the second issue, or the second seminar, like Mr. Yusefian said, had to do with sustainable architecture and the unbelievable projects throughout the country at this point. It used to be, you know, Europe was leading the charge. That may still be the case, but in cities like Seattle and Portland, Oregon, Savannah, Georgia, they're just doing an incredible amount of work. So hopefully, we're going to come up with some sustainable architecture guidelines. And one of the things that was interesting, too, was what a good business decision it is. They actually surveyed 283 buildings that use some sort of green building standard, and in fact, they didn't cost any more to build than a normal building did. So it's not just the money that you're going to save in energy throughout the years, but the actual, the building itself wasn't, didn't cost any more. So those are the two things from the conference. And then I just wanted to mention the Department of Consumer Affairs of LA County actually has a Consumer Affairs Real Estate Fraud and Information Program, and it has to do with homeowners who are facing foreclosure, whether through fraud or just a mistake on their part, but also homeowners who are refinancing a loan can free of charge speak to one of the counselors and let them review the loan documents, et cetera. And that number is 1-800-973-3370. And that's the County of Los Angeles Department of Consumer Affairs. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Weaver. I have a few announcements. One is, we had a very nice visit here in council chambers with students, first, second, and third graders from R.D. White Elementary School, Franklin, and Fremont Elementary Schools here. They filled up the council chambers last week and had another very, very interesting question-and-answer session with the mayor and various city staff, and with our park rangers, and so on. It's, by the way, for those of you who don't necessarily have children in the Glendale elementary schools, this is something we've been doing pretty consistently. I know my colleague, council member Najarian, had a group of, was it fifth graders? Fifth graders from Fremont Elementary School here, I think, a week or two, in late May, I believe, and it's something that we want to continue to do. It's a lot of fun. The kids, believe it or not, even in those grade levels, are studying social studies, have a lot of questions about how this all operates, and very clever kids. I was standing out there asking them if they knew who the other city council members were, and the hands were going up, and I said, yes, sir, and he says, Councilmember Aaron Najarian. And I said, that's right. Another hand, Dave Weaver, David Weaver. I said, that's right. Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Yusefian. And I was just stunned, and then it was pointed out to me that they were looking past me and reading the names on the dais. So, very, very clever, curious, smart, great kids, and we'll be doing more of that as the year goes along, once school is back in session. I'd also like to thank my colleague, our colleague, Joeline Wagner, who is the president of the Glendale School Board, for her participation with me at the Glendale Education Foundation's Student Showcase, the Alex Theater. That was a great deal of fun and very touching at the same time, to see all the performances from all of the different elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and also so that Joeline Wagner and I could take our burlesque or Bauterville show to the stage of the Alex Theater and do our one- or two-minute stand-up routine there. That was also emceed by Chip Stone and former Mayor Eileen Given. So it was a terrific evening. If you missed it, I understand it will be eventually on our, well, I'm sure it's going to be replaying on Channel 6, and eventually, it'll be on the city's GTV website, so. Two other items. One is, I was very happy to see so many of our residents and city staff out at the Arts and Crafts Festival over the weekend, braving the heat. We saw Mr. Allers out there, saw Mr. McFaul, I saw Councilmember Yusefian, Councilmember Weaver. I'm forgetting a whole bunch, but some of our staff from the Management Services Office. It was a lot of fun. Attendance was down just a wee bit, but with an event like that, down 10,000 people still means there were about 45,000 people out there over the weekend, so it was a nice event. And I want to thank everybody who participated and everybody who dropped by. Lastly, I have an issue that I wanted to raise. It has come to me that some people are not quite understanding what the situation is with our fellow citizens in Glendale who come to the podium to speak on issues, and perhaps English is not their first language, or they're not comfortable trying to communicate in English. So why we do not provide them translators is the question that keeps being posed. Or, more importantly to me at this very moment, something I want to make very clear, it is not the mayor that is setting this policy about translators here. And that is one of the stories that is going around and around and around and around in certain communities. This is a policy adopted by the Glendale City Council prior to my election, and it was February 6th of 2007, I believe, and by unanimous vote of the City Council at the time. And so I have a little clip I'd like to play that will help explain this. First of all, the question is, who is, who is not at the dance? Let's start with that. And clearly, I am the council member missing from the debate. Let's see how the debate actually occurred back in February 6th, 2007. This is our city manager.
Well, I was going to suggest Scott's memo indicates that one, you don't have, the city doesn't have a legal responsibility to provide interpreters. And in many cities, interpreters are not provided. There are some cities that rely on sort of happenstance, you will try and have a staff member there. But the cities, frankly, who are serious about it and tell the public, you know, we will make an attempt to have an interpreter for you if you give us reasonable notice, they rely on certified interpreting firms to provide that service. And then you're going to have a cost associated with that to do that, but, you know, otherwise it's going to be catch-as-catch-can. You know, maybe we can, maybe we can't. If you rely on staff, we're going to have to find a staff member who frankly feels comfortable playing that role. One is comfortable standing here and having the cameras on them while they try and interpret and deal with the dialects and everything else. So, one, if you're going to provide it, if you're going to tell the public, we will provide it, you'll need to have a reasonable period of time to give us notice. And frankly, I think we should, we should look into some of the cities that are using certified interpretation firms to see what that cost is.
Okay, and then let's hear from Councilmember Quintero.
Mr. Quintero.
I think with day's notice or 48 hours' notice, we can ask staff members in the city of Glendale, we literally have how many thousands employees, see if we can get some volunteer, get a volunteer corps to donate their time on a Tuesday evening. If the people don't notice, notify us ahead of time, then they have to bring their own. But I don't have any interest in spending money for paid translators. I just don't, I don't see that.
Mr. Starber.
And then we have some input from Councilmember Manukian.
What if an individual came up and just spoke in a different language here, and then we can have a translator at our leisure later on and address the issues that they're...
On the replay?
Either on the replay or, because if someone comes here for oral communications, we can't turn them away and say, you know, we don't have... They can still come up and speak, but Mr. Kasakian doesn't have to, or you don't have to provide word-for-word translation services at the drop of a hat, so you can always translate.
And then Councilmember Yusefian.
Mr. Yusefian. I agree with Mr. Manukian. I mean, we are assuming everybody who comes in here speaks either Armenian or Hispanic that we understand. If a person comes in here and speaks Tagala, none of us in this room understand it.
Well, if they speak either of those, some of us don't understand that either.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. And so at one point, you need to serve that individual also. So while they may be able to come and speak, and we may not be able to respond, maybe we could use that tape to have somebody else interpret it, so this way we can take care of that individual. We don't have to worry about paying for that because it could be translated during the work hour, and on top of that, the individual who's translating it doesn't have to worry being on cameras because they're not going to be there, and that would solve the problem. But I think the best thing for people who do not speak the English language, which is the official language the government operates, is if it would, it would be very helpful when they come, bring somebody with them who does speak the language. And generally, their own kids will be very helpful because most of the time, the kids learn more than the parents do when it comes to...
So what do you want to do on that? Is that it?
Yeah, I think what Mr. Manukian is suggesting is a good idea. I guess that takes care of that point.
Then I believe we have our city attorney summing up.
Regarding English language translation, that individuals will either have to bring their own translator, or they can speak in their native language to be reviewed and translated at a later time.
Okay. Mr. Kasakian calls the roll.
Councilmembers Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi, thank you. Next, please.
So, at the square dance, you need to bring your own translator, as we will see. There you have it. And again, I take the time to do this because there have been some very unfortunate comments being made. Apparently, I'm being told to hold because we're not done going through. Well, actually, the playtime on this is four and a half minutes, Mr. Attorney. There have been some rather unfortunate comments made, that our policy is simply my policy that's being directed at certain individuals, certain ethnic groups within the city. That is not the case, and I just wanted to take us back just a few months, about a little over a year ago, and show the evolution of this. I think it is a good policy. I frankly, if I'd been here, would have voted to join my colleagues in that.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to file a protest on the basis that Mr. Quintero and I were in dress.
The public figure, Mr. Yusefian.
I didn't notice that.
So, next time when you do this, put me in the pants.
Do my better. Duly noted. All right. All right. Are there any other staff comments?
Yes. I just want, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to share with you and our audience here in the chambers and at home, an event that I was at this afternoon was a retirement party for someone who's been ever-present figure in Glendale schools today. Unfortunately, Assistant Superintendent Alice Petrosian is leaving Glendale UFI School District to go to Pasadena. And there was a very warm farewell for her over at the school district just down the street from us. I just wanted to wish her well personally. I often have mentioned to folks here at the city and elsewhere that I'm a product of the public schools of the city, having gone to John Marshall, R.D. White, Wilson, and then Glendale High School. And Alice Petrosian was a role model for many of us, particularly the young Armenian-Americans in the school district who were going to school at the time. So I wish her well. And also, I want to mention that it is going to, there will be an event on Saturday, June 14th, 2008. It is the 110th anniversary of Filipino Independence Day. So anyone interested in learning about the Filipino culture, who's interested in attending this event, it's Saturday, June 14th, 5:00 p.m., at the Glendale Central Library on East Harvard. It's a wonderful event. I was there last year, and you get to see some wonderful young Filipino. Members of our community perform traditional dances, learn about the history and the beautiful country that is the Philippines. So those are my two announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Are there any other staff comments before we move on? All right. Next item, please.
Next item, next item is consent calendar. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Yusefian.
I'd like to...
There was, there is actually...
Yeah, before you move, there's, I didn't know if you wanted to pull an item. We have a request to pull 5C and 5E1.
And 5A.
And 5 what?
5A.
A, like apple. Okay.
And move the rest. Second.
Okay, motion is second. Why don't we call roll on those, and then we'll come back.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Can we hear the item, please, at 5A?
At 5A, the City Clerk regarding approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting held on Tuesday, May 20th, 2008.
The reason I pulled the item is because there is a sentence in here that makes no sense on page one, under four, when it says, "City Council Staff Comments," second paragraph, second line from the second paragraph, it should basically said, "had," remove place, "a booth in which..." Okay, so Councilmember Yusefian commented that the Redevelopment Agency had a booth, and he was there from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
and he was there from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Instead of saying, "had placed a booth from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m." I didn't place a booth there.
I meant that the redevelopment agents-
Right, but it doesn't say, "I was there." It says redevelopment. Redevelopment booth was there several days.
We can look at the record and correct it as you'd like.
Let's do that.
Bring those minutes back.
Okay. No, I didn't.
Ate at the booth?
Okay.
There was no food.
We'll review the record and bring those minutes back to you.
Let's do that.
Okay.
All right. And so I assume we will, we will, we can vote to approve those as corrected.
Yeah.
Mayor, those will be off calendar. We'll, City Clerk will review the record-
We'll bring it back with the minutes next week.
With or without corrections.
All right. Let's hear the item at 5C.
5C is Director of Public Works regarding installation of speed humps on Olmsted Drive between Pacific Avenue and Virginia Avenue. At C1 is a motion approving the installation of five speed humps.
I have a card from Barry Allen. Mr. Allen, your sticker is not here, or your famous trademark.
He's running out of stickers.
Yeah, that's right, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council and staff and the public. I'm Barry Allen. I have no problem with the issue on the, on the agenda 5C. My issue is the fact that that came from the TPC from February, this past February. The folks with the candlesticks on Linda Vista Lane, their project was, the TPC came back and said, "Take down the candlesticks." That's still waiting to come back to the council. And it's been waiting for, what, almost three years, back and forth? The council directed it at the TPC, the TPC had several meetings on it, including a special meeting, and yet, those folks are still waiting. I don't understand why that didn't come back under the consent calendar. That's what I would like this council to inquire of. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is it possible to find out where, where that report is from?
Mr. Mayor, council, members of the council, first correction, it hasn't been with the TPC for three years. It was directed down to the TPC, they conducted an initial meeting, and keep in mind, they only meet on a monthly basis. They directed staff to go back and gather further information. We held a special meeting in order to try to expedite it. Bottom line is, it comes to you on the 24th.
Of this month?
Yes, report's been submitted.
All right, so-
Move the item. Second.
All right, can we call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Weaver-
Hi.
Yusefian-
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Okay, let's hear the item at 5E1.
5E1 is City Clerk regarding Ward of Contract for Legal Advertising for the city of Glendale, Spec. Number 2054. D1 is a motion awarding contract times Community News, Division of the Los Angeles Times, TBA, the Glendale News Press, The Soul bidder.
Mr. Milano, you're the speaker with the card on that item.
Good evening, my name is Herbert Milano. I just wanted to suggest that perhaps it would help significantly to those who get a chance only to see the agenda item, for us to know what the actual amount of the appropriation is, to be placed right here on the document. I think there's plenty of room to say it's $60,000. Or, the, if you notice on the back of the agenda item, item 8D has the appropriation of $711,000, or with regard to the, the safety on parks. But I think that if the city were to provide at least a summary of the overall cost of an item, I think it would allow for a little bit more transparency and clarity to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. What is, is there a policy on that?
Well, I don't know about the policy about placing it, but that is just what we annually request, and sometimes they'll go over it. It really depends on how much advertising the city does, and sometimes there'll be less. But from what we've experienced, that is basically the, that's the base amount that is needed. And, you know, for, if you'd like, we can put it next time.
Okay.
Move the item. I think it says $60,000 in here. Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Councilmembers Najarian-
Yes.
Quintero-
Yes.
Weaver-
Hi.
Yusefian-
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. Next item.
Next item is oral communications.
Okay, and per our policy at the moment, we have moved, I have moved the, the oral comment period to a period following the agendized items, with the exception of those who would like to voluntarily limit their speech to three minutes for the purpose of announcements. I have a few cards, so let me start with Anita Husepian, the USC Eye Study.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm here representing the University of Southern California, and I wanted to-
You state your name for the record, please.
Anita Husepian.
Thank you.
And I wanted to talk about a research study that is being conducted by the physicians at USC Doherty Eye Institute. We're looking at eye diseases in kids between the ages of six months and six years old, and we're looking at different ethnicities within that. We've already conducted eye exams on over 6,000 kids in different areas of Los Angeles. And now we're coming here to open our third clinic in Glendale, and hopefully conduct at least 6,000 more exams. We're offering free exams, and we're federally funded. This is actually the largest and first eye study for kids in the United States. Our staff is going to be going door-to-door in Glendale and asking the parents to sign up their kids for appointments for these exams at our clinic, which is going to be open six days a week. Our exams are done by USC pediatric ophthalmologists, and it's at no cost to anyone with kids in that age range. Whether they have insurance or they don't, it doesn't matter. This test results are confidential and will be kept private, but you will get a report, the parent will get a report of the results, and we'll give them a copy for their pediatrician as well. If there are any problems with the kids in terms of their eyes, we refer them back to their pediatrician or a local ophthalmologist. We're not affiliated with any pediatricians or local ophthalmologists, we're just here to do the testing. So we're not doing any follow-up treatment. The exam is just a routine, non-invasive exam, and we're not testing any type of new procedures or new instruments, we're just testing kids at an earlier age. And our purpose in doing this research study is to detect and treat eye diseases at an earlier age, in hopes of slowing the progression and preventing such diseases in the future. So I'm here today to hopefully get a high participation rate among the residents of Glendale, and to ask the mayor and the city council members for their full support. We're located at 230 North Maryland, Suite Number 107, and our phone number is Eric So thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Mayor, question, and that was some of your people before-
Yes, you met with another staff member.
When are you going to start, and how long will this study go on for?
We hope to be here from a year to two years. Hopefully, we'll be able to fit those 6,000 exams in that period of time. We are going track by track, we're going section by section in Glendale. So it could be that if you do call us, and we're not in that area, or haven't opened up those blocks in Glendale, you may have to wait for an appointment. But hopefully, since this is not to treat any illness, hopefully, they'll be willing to, to wait to make that appointment.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Leon Mayer, the Friends of the Public Library, at least I, I hope that's what FOPL means, so note here, F-O-P-L. So I, I hope that means Friends of the Public Library.
Yes, we always call it the F-O-L for short.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, my name is Leon Mayer, I'm here from the FOPL, and on behalf of the library as well. Our next program is July 26th, Brian Keith Jenkins, World Foremost Authority on Counterterrorism and Terrorism, to talk about his book, Unconquerable Nation, Understanding Our Enemy and Strengthening Ourselves. Now, this program was originally set for June 18th, but I want to make everybody clear that it's July, I mean, July 18th, to make everybody clear, it's July 26th, 7:00 at the Central Library. Admission is free. He, as, as I told you, is a World Foremost Authority on Terrorism and Counterterrorism. He started studying terrorism 40 years ago. He's the assistant advisor to, senior advisor to the Rand Corp. Country all over the world. He's lectured and talked to and consulted with the Catholic Church, the Church of England, the Department of Defense, Homeland Security, you name it, he's been there. And he started his career as a combat veteran with the, with the Army Special Forces, and he was given awards for valor in Vietnam, as well as in Dominican Republic. This is a great find for us to have him at the library, and we ask you to consider coming to the library, July 26th, 7:00, to see and hear and read his book, sign his book, buy his book. That's Brian Michael Jenkins, Unconquerable Nation. Flyers are available at the library, at City Hall, I have a couple left here right now, if anybody hasn't got them yet, because I was ready around your audience before we started, just raise your hand. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Ron Farina, followed by Larry Cohen.
Good evening, I'm Ron Farina, I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross, Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. I'm here for a couple of reasons tonight. One, this is the start of the summer, and the blood supply grows low across the county when summer starts. The schools are closed, most of them are closed for the summer. Many people are taking vacations, so companies don't traditionally have blood drives. And our blood supply gets down to sometimes one day for O positive. We need blood donors, we've got a lot of healthy people here in the community, we know that have not donated blood, and we want to encourage them to make a donation. Very easy to do, you can call 1-800-GIVE-LIFE, 1-800-GIVE-LIFE, and you can make an appointment. We have blood drives once a week at our chapter headquarters at 1501 South Brand, so that's a convenient location. They start at 1:00 in the afternoon and go to 8:00 in the evening. That's the first and third Tuesday of every month, and also the second and fourth Thursday, and the last Saturday. So please, help us keep safe and healthy blood available for all the Glendaleans that may need it. We've always come across somebody who, whose life is saved because blood was available for them in an emergency. And it's available for you and your family members, and it's also available for the people that can not donate on their own, the, the young and the old, and the people that are, that are ill. The second message is an invitation to yourselves and the entire community to a fundraiser we have coming up. This is our second annual fine wine tasting. It's this Thursday, June 12th, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. It's at the Forest Lawn Museum. I've been in Glendale many years, and I've not been up to the museum before. Thank you, Artie. It's going to be a wonderful event, there's going to be a number of fine wines there, cheeses, chocolate, and also appetizers. And I, I have to admit that the appetizers are starting to outshine everything else, because there are about 18 different kinds that are prepared by gourmet chefs. So if you can attend, if you have some money left after going to the gas station, come on down, it's, for the city council members, be our guest, and have a good time, support the Red Cross. We don't get any government funding, so we're like all the other worthy organizations out there, we rely on community support. Any questions?
No, just other than to mention my colleagues, that if, if you don't, if they haven't drawn enough blood on Tuesday nights from all of you, you can go on the weekend and-
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Larry Cohen, followed by Marcia Hanford.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Larry Cohen, and I'm a member of the Glendale Emergency Auxiliary Radio Service and the Crescent Valley Amateur Radio Club. You might be aware that we are having our annual Field Day on Saturday, June 28th through Sunday, June 29th. It's a yearly event that provides amateur radio operators the ability to set up their equipment using emergency procedures and non-commercial power. And it's a 24-hour period, starting at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday and ending at 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, where we attempt to make as many contacts all over the country as we can. So it's, it's pretty exciting, and it's being held this, this year at the Duque Magin Wilderness Park. And we're very, very appreciative of the ability to use the park for the event. And I just wanted to express our appreciation to the city of Glendale for the support that you have given the Gears members and the Crescent Valley Radio Club. I have brought along some handouts, so I would like to leave them with the city clerk, Mr. Kasakian, and he can distribute them as, as needed. So thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Council. Marcia Hanford.
Good evening, council, staff, members of the public, my name is Marcia Hanford, I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. There's a lot going on Thursday night, in addition to the Red Cross event, there's that thing happening at Staples Center, they didn't consult us for a conflict, so the Lakers will be competing for our attention as well. But Thursday night, at the, at 7:00 at the First Congregational Church, 2001 Kenyatta, the Glendale Historical Society is presenting, "Don't Trash Your Windows, You'll Only Trash Your Property Value." This is presented by a firm that specializes in windows restoration. As people are moving from spring into summer and working on home improvement projects, this is something that a lot of people will be interested in. Instead of replacing windows with versions that may not be quite as aesthetically pleasing, there are ways to maintain the old windows at perhaps a reduced cost. So this is open to the public, it is free of charge, donations are accepted from non-members of the Historical Society. It's at 7:00 Thursday, First Congregational Church, 2001 Kenyatta. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the last of the cards for the three-minute period. Can we have the next item, please, Mr. Kasakian?
Next item is adoption of ordinances under 7 on the agenda, and at 7A is an ordinance adding Section 4704.3 to the Glendale Building and Safety Code relating to the very high fire hazard severity zones. This was offered on June 3rd, 2008, by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, move 7A.
Motion is second. Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Mayor, last week, I had asked the Fire Department to provide a detailed map with addresses and so on and so forth. For the public's sake, I think what they should do, it's very easy to go to the Glendale website, and then from there, jump to the Fire Department website, and on the front page, you just scroll down a little bit, not on the side, just on the front, it would say, "The High Fire Zone," and you click there, and there's actually a map that shows street by street, gives you indication of where the high fire zone is. And if it's the blue line, and it's checkered, that's the old zone. If there's a red section that does not have the checkered, that's the addition, and the addition is very small in those areas. I did get an email from a resident who asked whether or not those people that we added to that zone got a notice. The answer was, no, they did not get a notice. After looking at the very detailed map, it became very apparent that there wasn't a lot that was added, actually, some areas have been deleted. It's a good map to take a look at, if you have not done this, and I want to thank the Fire Department for putting it on the internet. Even though I did not get a full big map and big document, but I thought having it on the internet is very good, because you can zoom it, you can blow it up, you can actually look at it a little bit better. But if they need any more detail, I'm assuming they can contact the Fire Department, you can contact the Fire Department to find out whether or not you're in those high hazard areas. So my issue- So my issues have been resolved, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and thank you to the fire.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. All right, Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes. We have the next item, please.
At 8A is an action item, at Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding July 4th fireworks program. 8A1 is a motion co-sponsoring the Crescent Valley Fireworks Association's July 4th, 2008 fireworks event and contributing $5,000 towards the expenses of the event.
Okay. We have one speaker. One speaker card. I'm sorry, Mr. Chapchan, I didn't look up to see you. I beg your pardon. You were not the one speaker I was thinking of, but we're happy to have you. Why don't you fill us in?
Thank you, Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council. If you don't mind, I'd like to call Coco Manosianup, who's the administrative analyst who wrote the report, and maybe he can give you just a brief report on this.
Very good. Welcome, Mr. Manosianup.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The report in front of you is requesting co-sponsorship to the CV Fireworks Association event, annual July 4th fireworks event. Last year, council approved a motion to sponsor the event with a $5,000 donation to the event. And this year, the event will be held at the same location, which is going to be the Lacrosse Elementary School. And the event is estimated to cost about $30,000. The association has been fundraising. They do have quite a bit already fundraised, $8,000 thus far, and they look forward to the city's endorsement, as well as they have several events, fundraising events planned to raise the remaining money, amount of money to have the event.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions before you...
Yes, I do have a question from staff. A question from staff. Last time when the council did this, we said put this on the budget. So my question is, why is this even on the agenda? Why isn't this just part of the budget that you just automatically do this?
Let me answer that. It's because we did put it in the budget, but wanted to make sure this time that the council would want to authorize expenditure for the same purpose. Last year being the first time, and last year was noted it was a match. You recall Supervisor Antonovich had extended the money and it was presented to use somewhat as a match. So we did include the money in the budget. So it's appropriated, but wanted to make sure that the council approved its expenditure this year for that purpose.
So would this be coming back to us next year?
It'll be in the budget.
Or is it just going to be in the budget?
Should be in the budget.
Okay, so this is it. We're not going to see this thing go over and over again. Okay, thank you. By the way, did Supervisor gave $5,000?
This year, I believe the Supervisor has pledged $1,000 donation to the event.
Oh, I gotta call the Supervisor.
Although if I may, for the record, we do believe the accounting string listed here, 43,101,142, it is the City Manager's Special Events Program budget. However, I was informed that this particular item would come out of the co-sponsorship Special Events budget, which is 43,101,143. Would like to make that known for the record.
Oh, that's a correction?
That is a correction. In the report, it highlights 142. The program number would be 143.
Okay.
Now move the agenda item.
Second, but you have a...
Thank you, Mayor Draymond, council staff. My name is David Myers. I'm the treasurer of the Crescent Valley Fireworks Association, and I wanted to say thank you very much for your consideration of Glendale's co-sponsorship, excuse me, co-sponsorship of the event. Very excited to live in a community that comes together to support celebration of our nation's Independence Day. And this year, it's going to be a great event. Last year was a phenomenal event, and lots of people, lots of thousands and thousands of people, quite a few from this room were there. We're going to have lots of wonderful food booths again this year, and the carnival rides are going to be back in a limited fashion, but we're going, each year, we're modifying it, see what works, what doesn't. And then, of course, this first-rate fireworks show, which is a really good show. And the gates are going to open at 4 o'clock and close at 8:30. And if you need more information, it's Crescent, it's CV Fireworks Association, cvfireworks.com, or you can call 818-248-2271. And we just got the tickets, so we are encouraging everybody who's going to attend or planning on attending the event to please try to buy your tickets ahead of time so we can avoid any lines, streamline the process of getting everybody into the event. And those are available at the Crescent Valley Chamber office at 3131 Foothill, the Farmer's Market. There'll be a booth, Bob Smith Toyota, Jay's Maintenance, Bob Smith Toyota, excuse me, it's 3322 Foothill, Jay's Maintenance, 3550 Foothill, Paul's Professional Window, 2707, and the Valley Sun Newspaper at 1061 Valley Sun Lane. And if you have any questions...
How much are the tickets?
Tickets are $5. We really, our mission statement is to bring a high-quality fireworks display to the community and provide a safe, affordable, fun option for all local residents. And to keep it safe, keep it local, it really benefits everyone, businesses, community, especially with the price of gas right now, nobody has to go anywhere.
And you're a 501(c)(3)?
We are a 501(c)(3). I forwarded the letter and...
I got that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to tell that to the public who would like to donate more.
Tax deductible charity, so all the proceeds go just for this event. And it's coming together quite nicely. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, another question, but to correct an impression left to the question without this would come back each year. It would not come back for the appropriation because you'd budget the money. Under our policy, as a co-sponsor, the City Council would have to receive the request and approve that each year.
Okay, got it.
So that's why they're here, this evening is as a co-sponsor, request for co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Kasakian.
Councilmembers, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Hey, he is Director of, and Mr. Mayor, if you could turn on your mic, I apologize. Thank you.
Pardon me. A B like boy.
Yeah. Director of Human Resources Regarding Proposed Urgency Ordinance Amending the Supplemental Benefits Ordinance for Certain Officers, Subordinate Officers, Assistance Deputies, Clerks and Employees of the City of Glendale for Their Compensation. At B1 is Urgency Ordinance for Introduction, Glendale Police Officers Association, GPOA. At B2 is an Urgency Ordinance for Introduction, Glendale City Employees Association, GCEA. At B3 is Urgency Ordinance for Introduction, Glendale Firefighters Association, GFFA. At 5 is a, I'm sorry, at 4 is an Urgency Ordinance for Introduction, Glendale Management Association, GMA. At 5 is an Urgency Ordinance for Introduction, Executives, and at 6 is an Urgency Ordinance for Introduction, City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Let's see if we have a motion, a second, and then we have some speakers. Oh, it's for introduction, okay. Let me go right to the public for the moment, then, is Herbert Milano, followed by Barry
My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council and City Staff. A couple of, a few months ago, I presented this particular PowerPoint, and I bring it again in order to give the public a different way of understanding the city's budget. I am a proponent that the city's budget, as extensive as it is, that's a very thick book that the council gets, should be summarized in a way that it is transparent and clear to the public. Particularly, I'm interested in seeing the trends that occur with regard to how certain expenses move forward. Here I have a PowerPoint from the year 2000 to 2006. I didn't get the 2007, 2008 because I brought these numbers from the budget summary, and there was not one prepared for 2007, 2008. So what I have here are the, the bar that, should I say, the line that is plotted there for, with a triangle are the number of households in Glendale, roughly around 73,000, and there's been a very slight increase during that period of time of only about 3%. What you see above that is the salary increases during that same period of time. The purpose of presenting it is that it's only when we look at a graph like this that we begin to assess what the trends are and how they are impacting our budget, and it allows us to determine if we're going to be in severe financial crisis. And I brought this thing last year, and as you know, today, we have that type of issue we move forward. This is a little bit more difficult graph to see, but this is a public safety and property tax. If I were to plot the amount of money that the city receives additionally, or property tax and sales tax, those two primary taxes, you're going to find that the salaries increase at a rate higher than the combined total of property tax and sales tax. So that means that we would have to obtain the money from someplace else, and as most people know today, we got it from the GWP. And here are the comparative salaries, and I'll leave it at this, that police and fire have by far been increasing significantly, almost exponentially, since the year 2000. And what I've been proposing is that if we are going to have these increases, that we have perhaps some performance objectives with regard to the increases. In other words, what are we going to see in terms of performance improvements by these particular increases in salaries and combined salaries and benefits that we see here? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Allen, followed by Lydia Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguardians. Today, we're going to begin the process to grant the employees about $6 million in raises, according to the city manager and today's GNP. It doesn't help the public if we can't hire frontline service people. He said, "If you're not keeping up, you're falling behind," and that becomes a pretty deep hole to climb out of. With a 5% to 8% employee turnover rate and a current stock of 100 vacant positions, attracting a talented pool of candidates is a major concern, City Executus said. The salary increases were based in large part on paid surveys of 13 other similarly-sized cities in Southern California. The best frontline employees we have. The Fire Department can't keep overtime controlled, their frontline employees. The Finance Department double-booked revenue and somehow added $30 million to last year's capital outlay, and had to bring in the city's internal auditor to get the operation on track so there would be a budget this year. The tree fiasco, frontline people, costly losing litigation, and a water department that gives money to a city council member. Maybe the time has come to measure up to our own city rather than another city. We've seen how of the four city employee associations, only the firefighters' union stands in place of their management. Rather than become another Vallejo, let's ask these union representatives to cut back 90% of the contract pay raises and benefit increases that shall be granting them in the next few weeks. When contract negotiations begin for the Fire Department in January, let's make them open rather than secret, as allowed by the Brown Act. The Brown Act allows for open negotiations, and I'm certain that the mayor of the city would like to see open government, transparent government, so that the public can add their input at the time of the negotiations. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Lydia Ray, followed by Dr. Richard Espirito. I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't hear you.
This is D, item D.
D, okay. We will reshuffle the deck. Then it's Dr. Richard Espirito.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. I wasn't sure I was going to get shuffled out of the deck on that one.
As long as you're playing with a full deck, Mr. Espirito.
Today I am. Mr. Mayor, I'm not opposed to any benefit raises to any member of the employees of the City of Glendale, Fire Department, Police Department, whoever. But one of the interesting things was asked to me four years ago by an individual who's running for the City Council. One of the most expensive cost items is medical insurance. Unfortunately, that's true. And one of the issues that we, the city staff, should look at is the duplication of services. We have a program where you have a pre-employment fiscal contracted out to one provider. You have a group insurance policy for the group, they go to another provider, and then they have a workman's comp program, and they go to another provider. Theoretically, all three of those providers have the identical same laboratory test, x-rays, reduplicated. If you could combine this into what is called a 24-hour care program, where you combine the providers of service, the pre-employment, the group insurance, and the workman's comp, you're going to reduce your overhead by 40%. That's on the laboratory and other reduplication of laboratory services. I think the City Council should take a proactive role, not reduce benefits to the employees, but look at more creative ways of doing this. 12 years ago, I reduced the cost of Guillermo Vineyards or Cigna Health Plant by 40% the first year by combining services. I think that's something that people should start looking at and creating a new, not reducing benefits, but looking at a different way of reducing our costs. Thank you very much, and I hope somebody looks into this.
Thank you, Dr. Espirito. Okay, that is my only card on this, my last card, I should say, on this. Mr. Weaver.
Well, if it's okay with my colleagues, I'll introduce the urgency ordinances at 8B, 1 through 6.
Okay. Very good. All right, let's see, the item at 8C.
At 8C is Director of Human Resources Regarding Proposed Ordinance for Introduction Amending the Salary Ordinance for Certain Officers, Subordinate Officers, Assistance Deputies, Clerks and Employees of the City of Glendale for Their Compensation. At 8C1 is ordinance for introduction Glendale Police Officers Association, GPOA. At 8C2 is an ordinance for introduction Glendale Firefighters Association, GFFA. At 8C3 is an ordinance for introduction Glendale City Employees Association, GCEA. And 8C4 is an ordinance for introduction Glendale Management Association, GMA, and GMA exempt.
Okay, thank you very much. We have two speaker cards. One is from Dr. Richard Espirito, followed by Barry Allen.
Once again, I'm Dr. Richard Espirito. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I have a major problem, and I said this once before to the Women's Commission. We need to fire every police officer who deals with domestic violence. We need to put them out of a job. We need to stop this in, with the children that we're raising now so that we don't have individuals growing up, learning how to abuse their wives and girlfriends. We need to stop this. One of the things that came out of this budget study is that you're going to eliminate the SRO middle school officers. We need those three middle school officers to help prevent these kids who are still in the formative years going out, learning to be abusive, getting involved with gangs, because once they get into high school... because once they get into high school, the situation is worse, and once they get out of high school, then we're out there chasing them down the roads because they're in gangs and doing all the things that they're not supposed to be doing. We need to prevent kids from getting into the situation, and this one program, the SRO middle school officers, is a very important program, and that is going to be cut. I think we need to look somewhere at reducing overtime in other departments, but this is one issue that I am very seriously thinking about talking to you about this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Espirito. Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll notice that that had the sticker on it.
It did have a sticker on it. I don't feel so bad now, yes.
I know that you feel comfortable with that. Exactly.
I know the world is still spinning on its axis and...
That is good.
...all is well.
I would like to finish up where I was before the commercial break. And that is unclosed meetings and closed sessions, and I'm quite certain that this council certainly wants the public to know how they interact in the salary negotiations because in April, we're going to be voting for new council. Closed meetings may be held for personnel, only to discuss the appointment, and that's "may" be held for personnel, only to discuss the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, discipline complaints about or dismissal of a specific employee or potential employee. The employee may request... Closed sessions are not allowed for discussing general employment, independent contractors not functioning as employees, salaries, wow, that's what we were looking at today with the MOUs, right? And those are all part of contracts that were negotiated before, and so you're obligated to put them back on and grant them the urgency ordinances. The performance of any elected official or member of the board, the local agencies' available funds, funding priorities or budget, labor negotiations, only to instruct the agency's identified negotiator on compensation issues. And of course, it goes on, the Brown Act states that except for closed sessions, to meet with the city's negotiator in bona fide labor relation situations concerning representative and unrepresented employees, "closed sessions may not include a discussion of or action on proposed compensation, except for reduction of compensation that results from the imposition of discipline." And that's Government Code Section 54957B4. Consequently, the city's plan to discuss salary increases in closed sessions would appear to violate the Brown Act, and that violation would not be cured by stating after the closed session what action was taken. As the California Court of Appeals has said, "Salaries and other forms of compensation constitute municipal budgetary matters of a substantial public interest warranting open discussion." So I call upon you, you can't do it today, you can't do it on this budget, on this contract issue, on these MOUs, but next year, when we negotiate, the first contract, I believe, is for the firefighters, I think they need to be open so we all can look in and participate. Thank you, Barry Allen for Vanguardians.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do I have a comment for my colleagues on item 8C? Councilmember...
I have a question of the Speaker. Mr. Allen, if you don't mind. I'm trying to understand the ramifications of what you just said, and clearly, for the past, since I've been involved in the city politics, you've been an advocate of fiscal responsibility and a critic of excessive salaries, overtime, and benefits to members of all the unions across the board. So what you're saying, then, is that when you're suggesting, or you're, I guess, challenging the mayor to open the, what was previously a closed session meeting, during the discussion of the terms or negotiations with the unions, that that be open to the public? Do you feel, I mean, how do you feel that that in any way is going to give the city any sort of better opportunity to keep salaries and benefits down? You're complaining that they're already too high. If our positions are made open to the public, as well as therefore to the unions that we're negotiating with, isn't this just going to blow the contract sky high?
Oh, absolutely not, sir. What is going to allow us to do is see how each council member reacts, and then when we decide to vote for fiscal accountability, we will say which council members want to be fiscally accountable, as opposed to those who say, "Ain't my money, let's give them more."
But don't we vote on that in public at the end of the day, anyway?
You don't, sure, you vote on it after it's all been decided. We all go through and we vote, and we ratify what's occurred. We're not looking at letting the public see and discuss and put their comments. We hear the things that "we can't get any employees." Yes, we can. There's not a city that's hiring today. There's not, you know, we don't, that's coming in, that's my issues for the budget part of the budget hearing on nine. And I want to address that then.
I understand, and you have the chance to...
But I wanted to make sure that we consider making the hearings, the issues on budget, on payroll, open so that the public can see what your deliberative stance is on each of these items.
Now, are you also going to the unions and asking them to hold their discussions and open? I mean, because I think unless you do that, the city or any entity that is bargaining for whatever is at a severe disadvantage tactically, strategically, with the other side, if your mere thoughts and whims and facial expressions, I mean, you want to see our reaction, you say, are being transmitted to the other side, I think that's a terrible way to strike a bargain to protect the salaries and the fiscal integrity of the city.
It's like any other negotiation. Here's my bottom line, take it or leave it. We have people recruiting, new firemen, new policemen, not a problem. We can get all sorts today.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember, you stay tuned, you have your handle.
Question from the city attorney. I think you just heard what Mr. Barry Allen read in the record. Are we violating the Brown Act to have these negotiations in closed session?
No, Mr. Allen is flat wrong, just to put it bluntly. We are prohibited from establishing or setting in closed session the salary for a single employee unless it's to address issues involving discipline. But you are permitted by the Brown Act to negotiate salary levels for groups or classifications of employees. You do not act illegally. In fact, you act completely properly. Your purpose involved in closed sessions is to provide information and direction to your negotiators, who then go back and negotiate with the employee associations.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you have another speaker?
Yes, we have one more speaker.
I'll wait, because I got questions from staff.
Okay. Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mayor Draymond. My name is Herbert Milano, a member of the city council. I believe that there should be a way for the public to convey to you their opinion with regard to the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, especially the prior MOUs that have been submitted and by the union representatives and your approval of it. It is my belief that those MOUs should not extend more than two years. Whenever you lock yourself into a four-year agreement, or you just found out that in a very short period of time, we had budgetary issues that came out well before that four-year agreement, I think sticking with a shorter period of time is essential. But it's also my belief that if the public were to look at these agreements, they may find questions with regard to what the council is agreeing to, even if it is after the fact. I think that we need to have a way of presenting our concerns. I want to bring a couple of them. There is on the MOU, an agreement that has been going back to the 1980s, where the city agrees to providing up to $4,000 in computing equipment as a loan to anyone who is covered by this particular agreement. Well, as most people know, computing costs have been reduced significantly in the last 20 years, so that today, for less than $1,000, we definitely can provide a significant amount of computing power to anyone who requests it. But then again, individuals earning $150,000, $200,000 could also be applying for the same loan, and I figure that there should be a way to say, "Look, for those employees earning $50,000 or less, we will provide this additional incentive." I think that the public can look at these documents and come to you with concerns with regard to issues that appear to be inequitable, especially when we find that we are not providing a similar type of assistance to the general public out of our funds, out of the overall general fund. I have looked at and requested documents with regard to, for example, the use of the police helicopter, and I was very pleased to hear Chief Adams saying a few months back that he was reducing those costs, and I welcome, you know, that particular type of initiative. But I also requested information to see how many arrests or convictions were generated of the use of police helicopters last year, and there weren't any. So imagine that there are some other type of performing issues that we can ask for for that type of budgetary expenditure. Similarly, with regard to the use of the K-9 unit, you know, it looks like and it appears that it's going to be of significant benefit, but no arrests or convictions were ever recorded with the use of the K-9 unit as well. So when the public gets an opportunity to look at these MOUs and evaluate it, maybe the city council could receive some benefits by the type of concerns that we have, because otherwise, you will be continuing to agree to terms that may be obsolete, or maybe there's a different way of saving the city money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. That is our last speaker. Mr. Yousefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to get somebody who prepared these MOUs to answer the staff report that was written. This is, and I will read parts of it so the public understands what's going on. GPOA is the Glendale Police Officers Association, $1.847,000. There are about 300 members. That was about a 5%. GFFA, which is about 1.210, that's $1,210,000 and some odd number, that's 180 people, that's 4% increase. GCA is $2,325,000, that's about 1,000 people, about a 3% increase. GMA, which is about $1,225,000, approximately about 300 members, if I'm not mistaken, and that's about a 3% increase. Now, pretty simple, I understood all of that. Now, you need to explain this part of it to me. It gets down in here, it says, "GMA fire sworn managers, 4%," and "GMA police swore managers are 4% cost of living adjustment." Now, I'm trying to understand if this is just the police or it also includes the fire? This is just the police? Okay. So just the police, then the sworn managers of police is 4% plus another 4% and then 2% market adjustment. So is that, am I reading this correctly or no?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Yousefian, what that refers to is the negotiations for the sworn police managers represented by GMA, and that, if you recall from the negotiations last year, those adjustments were handled by both a COLA as well as an inequity increase. So what you're seeing there with the sworn police managers, and that would be lieutenant, captain, and assistant police chief, 4% COLA. However, on top of that, for the lieutenant and assistant chief, a 2% inequity adjustment on top of the 4%, and for the police captain...
So it's a 4 and 2?
Correct, for those two classifications.
So that's 6%.
That's correct.
Okay. And then for fire captain is 6% plus 4 and 1/2, or it's just 4 and 4 and 1/2?
4 and 1/2, and that was for police captain.
Police captain. So it's 4 and 4 and 1/2, so it's 8 and 1/2, actually.
Correct, for that one classification. Again, if you'll recall from negotiations last year, that particular classification was at the very bottom of the labor market status.
But, because I added them all up, and I was getting to like 12%, and this was freaking me out. Okay. All right. I'm clear now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the questions I do have, one. For curiosity, I know when we did the budget, I think we eliminated the COLA for executives, because I see it's not on here. The benefits, we've taken care of, but not on for salary adjustments. But I'm curious, does staff do any analysis of where our executive level personnel are in relation to other cities? Part of the reason is this council and others have started to ask our executives to go to a lot of meetings, weekends, weeknights. They don't get paid for that. They're doing it on their own time. So we tended to start increasing workload of our executives, and I'm wondering, you know, if they're getting paid more than the average out there, hey, I have no beef with that, let it go. But if their average are below, what? Market bears out there, and we're making or ordering it, in essence, show up at these meetings for like Arcade and the Glendale Homer's Corning and Council, Pacific, Edison, whatever, you name it, where we stand. So a question of curiosity at this time, can anybody answer me?
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me take a stab at that. Mr. Weaver, members of the council. We did do a market survey for executives last fiscal year, and you recall, as a result, there were basic cost of living adjustments and, depending on individual positions, additional market adjustments to make sure we kept those positions as close to the average as we could. And that's always been our target for executive positions, is the average of the 13 cities that we survey. This year, we haven't done a survey. This year, the budget proposes that executives forego an increase, which is likely they'll fall behind to the extent that other cities are doing a cost of living. And again, come next fiscal year, '09, '10, when we do a survey, then we'll have to address that issue if indeed we find positions falling behind.
That's what I discovered, checking a few cities. Other cities are giving the adjustment at the effect of 1 July, so it looks like automatically a lot of our execs will fall below the average for the full year. Personally, I don't think that's right. I'm not looking to pay them extra or above the average, but I think our executives, for what we're asking them to do, and they're hardworking, I've seen them here on weekends, whatever, working, they're not getting paid for that. I just want to keep them where they are. And I don't care to sit and wait another year. That's personally my opinion. And again, I don't know where this money would come from if we did do it. It's the kind of thing, though, I'd like staff to take a look at the other cities and give us some kind of report, doesn't have to be here or something, to indicate where we stand in relation to other cities. What's fair is fair to everybody.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Najarian.
Mr. Doyle or Mr. Starbord, what is the latest CPI index figure?
Changes daily.
Mr. Aldrich.
I think our April, April, May to May is about 4%. So looking back a year ago, when these contracts were drawn up, a 4% cost of living increase seems pretty right on at this point.
Pretty close, yes.
We were not overpaying them, if our intention is to compensate them for the cost of living.
Or is COLA, no.
Okay. Councilmember Yousefian.
A question, I think I overheard Mr. McFaul say something, what the Speaker was talking. On the MOUs, do we allow people to borrow $4,000 for the computer?
That's correct. It's a longstanding program done through our credit union, where it's a loan up to...
That's what I heard from him, so I just wanted to make sure. Is it 2,000 or 4,000?
I believe it's 4,000.
So Mr. McFaul was wrong, so it is 4,000.
4,000, yes.
Okay. Also, in this MOU, which MOU, is it the first one or this one that is on the agenda? Which agenda is the one that deals with us paying for education?
That'd be the supplemental benefits ordinance.
And that's on the supplemental, not on this one?
Correct.
This is just strictly salary?
Correct.
So, and how about all the exercise program? Is it in the supplemental benefits also?
Yes.
Okay.
Salary ordinance is strictly salaries.
It's just the salaries? Okay. And... And, uh, that, that deals with you, my question on to Mr. Starbird or Mr. Aller, whoever it is, combined, this is over six million dollars. This was included in this year's salary, I mean, in the, this year's budget?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, does this also include any overtime? Okay? For example, GFFA, you're giving them a one point two million dollars increase in salaries. So their base salaries are going to go up as a whole. When the base salary goes up, when there is overtime, and there was eleven, no, hundred and eleven thousand hours of overtime, that would mean that now all these increases also affects those overtimes?
Yes.
So do we have a breakdown of what that would be? So if we have six million dollars just in salaries, how much would that translate in overtime for police and fire?
I couldn't answer that question. This is a projected figure for the, the upcoming year.
Okay. Maybe demand with all the numbers.
Let's see, now, budget's...
All right, let's see what we can get from Mr. Allers.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yusefian, we did budget for that increase for all the salary and benefits, so when the COLA is a, was agreed to in the MOU for either three percent for managers in GCA, or four percent or five percent for the police, all that is factored into all the benefit calculations, as well as the overtime calculation. So everything goes up, because you have Medicare, which is a tax on the salaries, that goes up, the retirement, which is also a percentage of salary, that goes up. So all that is factored into the budget that you have before you turn on the...
So we do attempt to estimate it and factor it into the preliminary budget?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have other questions? Mr. Weaver.
I just want to, no, no for you two. Just want to clarify again, from what I've been finding out from other cities, four percent will go in one July. So they're automatically going to fall behind, from what I know. So personally, I would like, you don't have to give it to me here, just give me a report, what are comparable cities that we always compare to, going to be making after one July two thousand eight?
All right, why don't we...
I'd like that personally.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, let me suggest, because we won't know that on July one, uh, because many cities won't finalize their negotiations, they won't adopt their packages until sometimes afterwards. Let me suggest that as the upcoming budget year unfolds, and we both see how our budget plan is going to come together, revenues, expenditures, what the state might do, we'll also include monitoring what other cities are doing and bring that back to you, say, by the end of the first quarter, so you'll have some sense both of how the budget looks, as well as how, uh, the other cities are treating other employees.
And we can decide what to do with executives, if anything.
Then you can, you make a decision anytime in the course.
We're already making retroactive. Mr. Mayor, with that, I'd like to induce the ordinances at eight, C, one through four.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on to eight D. Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
At eight D is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding first follow-up on park safety and security at various park facilities. At D one is a resolution appropriating seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and at eight D two is a motion directing staff.
Okay. Mr. Chapchan, this time I did not miss you. You are standing there big as life.
Thank you, Mayor Draymond, I appreciate that, um, and members of the city council. This time, I'd like to call up Dave Ahern, our capital projects administrator, who's going to present the report.
Mr. Ahern.
You want to let him do that?
Of course I'm going to let him do that.
Mr. Draymond, members of the council, um, the report before you tonight is our first follow-up report on park security. Um, the report proposes shifting seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars from existing park projects into a park security, um, project that, uh, the funds ostensibly come from the Stengel Field Rehabilitation Project Fund and New Park Development Fund. Um, the funds would fund improvements at two parks, Brand Park and Car Park, and would include improvements such as improved lighting, fences and gating, um, the relocation of park rangers to the Brand Park, um, location with, on a temporary pilot basis, um, including the lease of trailers for, for their, um, their temporary station at that location. Um, those are pretty much the improvements. Uh, again, it's seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars of existing funds that get shifted over to this, uh, project. We think that, uh, as staff, that this is a reasonable, uh, next step in addressing park security issues, and we can evaluate how effective these are, and then take additional steps as, as necessary and appropriate. We have, uh, plans to come back to council with, uh, additional information on staffing and technology issues as well.
Okay.
I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Draymond. Before we go there, uh, let me, uh, just mention, we have two, two speakers. Uh, let's hear them.
Yeah.
And, uh, we, maybe we'll have some questions for them as well. We have Lydia Ray, I think this time we have you on the right issue, followed by Russ Howe.
Thank you very much, and by now, I guess you know I am Lydia Ray. Um, and this past week, I've had a couple of different things happen that, in a way, relate. One is that I went to the meeting for the four hundred Paula apartment, um, residents on a proposed, but I think it's kind of a done deal, park that's basically the L.A. River, uh, revitalization with, including the equestrian aspects, the bike path and a path. Very good, excellent. I know over the past few years, everyone's been trying to get more parks. I then overheard a little bit on cable TV that in Neighborhood Services, which unfortunately, in my opinion, is a disservice to the city because it's become so overbearing that they no longer are concerned with enhancing lives, but controlling lives, that you wanted to add. So I think they could maybe be brought down to more safety and aesthetics, and put some of the money into the parks. You do have park rangers that are very limited in the amount of bodies they have. This past year, I also was lucky enough to go to the Glendale Citizens Academy on my ride along. One of these park rangers saved a man's life. It was not the first life he had saved. It was an older gentleman, and in the scheme of things, he won't be here much longer, but that did not matter. What mattered was the man was dying, his daughter, who's older than me, was watching, and she was suffering, and he was suffering. This man has saved lives before. If I weigh it out, and I have new parks, that's wonderful. If I have new parks, and I have people that are there to protect the nature, and protect the people, and truly have it an enhancement, maybe some of those areas that are just kind of frills could give up a little bit, and let us have those parks and have them with safety of having actual bodies. I've seen the same park ranger at many of the city events. He's out there with kids, and you would think every kid he is with is his own. If his kid was there, I would not know his kid from any other kid. These are quality people. If I see that man anywhere, or the few I've seen, to me, they are the best this city has to offer. I'd rather, lights may be nice, I'd rather have a, a body protecting me, a person that cares. And, you know, great, we can have the parks, let's have the people that'll be there and make them just wonderful for us. And if, you know, if I don't have a, a lawn that looks like a golf course, so be it, we're in a drought, we don't need that. Let's have some wonderful park rangers in those wonderful parks that we're hopefully bringing. So that's, that is what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ranger Howe.
I thought those were all his kids.
I've asked for closer to five minutes, or would you prefer me to stay closer to three minutes?
Let's see how it goes. Let's see how it goes. I'll, I'll go three minutes then, because it's start to finish, I need to make my decision ahead of time. Good evening, my name is Russ Howe, and I'm here tonight representing the Glendale Park Rangers Association. We have some concerns regarding the proposed proposal to relocate the park ranger station to Brand Park. Our first concern is that I learned about this proposal last Friday, when a reporter from the news press called me to find out what I thought about it. We had talked about the possibility of a substation, which is an idea that we support, but had never discussed relocating our headquarters. Second, I need to correct some inaccuracies in the report. The report states that we have a cadre of nine part-time park rangers. While we do have nine part-time employees, only four of them are part-time park rangers. So we have two full-time and four part-time park rangers available for patrol. The second inaccuracy I need to clear up is the claim that by being headquartered at Brand Park, rangers would be more centrally located for the patrol of parks where the majority of concerns are generated. The fact is that we are not set up like a fire station, where we're, where we are sitting at the station waiting for a call and respond from there. We are patrol-based, meaning a ranger reports for duty, checks out a vehicle, and goes out on patrol. We are already currently patrolling parks where the majority of concerns are generated. The problem is that there is almost never more than one ranger working at any one time, so our visit to each park may be the only one for the entire day. We moved out of the Verdugo Adobe seven years ago because we outgrew it. The move to Duke Major Wilderness Park provided larger quarters, but also gave us the opportunity to expand in the area of outdoor programming, which was also a function we were created to address, and one that is growing into a first-rate operation. Now we face the possibility of being squeezed into headquarters that are smaller than the Verdugo Adobe, and having the program that we are current, and having the programs that we are currently offering eliminated. The real issue is that we have two full-time and four part-time park rangers to patrol forty-one parks and five thousand acres of open space, three hundred sixty-five days per year. When I started here in May of ninety-two, it was abundantly clear that we could not accomplish what was expected of us with such limited staffing. So I submitted a recommendation to add additional full-time park rangers in August of nineteen ninety-two, and January ninety-three, and July of ninety-five, February ninety-seven, January two thousand two, January two thousand four, August two thousand four, January two thousand five, April two thousand five, July two thousand six, August two thousand seven, and January two thousand eight. In reality, at our current staffing level, it doesn't matter if we're headquartered in Duke Major Park, Brand Park, Griffith Park, or Yosemite National Park. We have one ranger on duty at any one time, and that ranger is patrolling the entire city. Moving us to Brand Park is nothing more than smoke and mirrors, it will not provide any additional benefit. If you want to move us to Brand Park, then build us a facility that will comfortably accommodate nine full-time park rangers, and give us the nine rangers so that we can truly begin to make some headway. Short of that, leave us where we are, and let us continue to give you the absolute best effort we can give you with what we have to work with, which is what we have done for the past sixteen years. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Thank you, Ranger Howe, just one second, if you would, wouldn't mind remaining. I know that there's going to be some questions. I'm sorry, councilmember Yusefian.
What do we pay for those part-time park rangers?
Uh, approximately twenty-one dollars an hour.
What does it cost us annually?
Oh, well, that's a relative question, because, uh, it depends on, on how the looming budget comes out. Um, I was, in, in preparation for the budget, I was informed we will have three hours per day budgeted. After that, I said, no, no, we're going to, we're going to carve out more money for that. So I don't know the specific answer to that. Three hours a day, I, I can guarantee you that we have, we have the funding for, perhaps more than that, and I will know when the budget is...
What I want to know is, how much would fifteen thousand dollars buy you?
In, in personnel?
Yes.
Doing some quick math, uh, I, I can't do quick math. Uh, not a lot. Our, uh, original allotment for park rangers, for part-time park rangers, was about forty-six thousand dollars a year, and that covered five hours per day, plus twenty hours a month for court time and things like that. So divide that by three would be, uh, an additional few hours a day.
So it would buy you maybe a one-third of a park ranger?
Uh, yeah, and actually, less than that, I believe, doing the quick math.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian.
A question of, uh, Ranger Howe. Um, Ranger, where do you do your paperwork? Let's say there's an incident, either it's an arrest or a interaction with, with wildlife, um, don't you go back to your headquarters, wherever that might be, to do the paperwork?
No, if we, if, an arrest or anything related to that was done at the police station, there's, we use the...
Do your paperwork there?
Use the report-writing computers, or the computers in the report-writing room to, uh, process that paperwork.
Is there any time when you're at your headquarters doing paperwork?
Oh, certainly. Certainly.
How many hours is that a day? Can you estimate?
It, it really depends. Uh, right now, I'm on light duty, and so I'm there more often than, uh, the other rangers. But, uh, generally, and, uh, for the full-time rangers, an hour a day, perhaps. The part-time rangers are there for probably half an hour a day to get in a uniform and, uh, get in a vehicle and head out in the field.
Do your vehicles come home with you at night, or do they remain at the headquarters?
They remain at the headquarters.
Councilmember Quintero.
There's a lot of, uh, mountains to cover, up in the Verdugos and so forth, so I can see that being an active patrol area. But the bulk of the parks are actually, let's say, south of the two-ten, even further south than that. So don't you wind up spending a lot of time here in Central and...
Yes, we do. That's, you know, we've been doing this a long time, we understand the patterns. So when rangers come on duty, uh, in the afternoon, we spend our times south of the one thirty-four freeway, Brand Park, Car Park, Palmer Park, Maple Park, Lower Shoal, uh, and then, depending on calls, right now, the sports complex is the hotspot, spending, trying to spend more time up there, Montrose Park, uh, it's just, we're, you know, it doesn't matter where, where you put the peanut butter, at the top of the slice of bread, or to the left side of the bread, when it's only this much peanut butter, there's a lot of bread chowing through.
And how about patrolling the mountains? You do that sort of during fire season, or when...
Unfortunately, we don't. Uh, the, our available time to patrol the mountains is really the winter time when the developed parks are less active. During the summertime, which is when we should be in the mountains, we don't have the personnel to be in the mountains. We have to be, uh, in the, in the developed parks to, uh, keep an eye on those.
And how, how much do, uh, the two full-time rangers, what's their, uh, general, or less, their yearly, um, salaries?
The, the park ranger manager position, salary plus benefits, is approximately, uh, approximately one hundred twenty thousand. The senior park ranger, which is the other position we have filled currently, is approximately a hundred thousand. And then the two vacancies for park rangers would be approximately eighty-five, ninety thousand, including benefits.
Okay, Mr. Weaver.
Not of the ranger, of staff.
Are there any other questions of, uh...
I just have one, one more of, of the ranger. Um, Ranger, we're responding to, obviously, some incidents that occurred in the past year at Brand Park, uh, I think which generated this entire park safety review. Uh, in your opinion, is Brands, is Brand Park still a hotspot?
Brand Park will always be a hotspot. It's a very popular park, it's a very active park. Um, we have, uh, and hotspot is a relative term. Uh, in terms of its use, it, it generates tremendous use, uh, between the athletic fields, the library, the hiking trails, uh, but in terms of, of what we've seen in, in questionable activity, that has been reduced in the past year because of several things. Uh, the, the presence of a security guard has helped, the increased patrols by park rangers, the increased patrol by the police department, and really, the, the community's involvement in, in keeping this issue on the front burner have all made that a, a much nicer facility. But it will always be a hotspot.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Ranger Howe. Mr. Weaver.
I have one, one of staff. Um, we're taking the money from Stengel Field, pagers the project, I guess the dog park. With these amounts, they're in the current budget that's ending at the end of June?
Yes.
And when we put them in the budget a year ago, the economy was totally different than it is today, right? Okay, so it's fair game to say, based on priorities and needs, a city, that we could consider delaying or postponing projects that a year ago we budgeted for, because these are unbudgeted moves we're going to make now. Is that a fair assessment?
We could do that.
Okay. So is a dog park more important than, initiating it, more important than, uh, the safety in the parks? It's not hard to do. Uh, Stengel Field, how long has Stengel Field been there?
Well, I think it's been there for over fifty years, if I'm not mistaken.
And it was named after Casey Stengel, so that goes back quite a ways. Um, I've been in there, I've been in the stands and underneath. Have we studied the entire replacement of that structure? It looks like it needs totally be replaced.
Yeah, I think it is, it is in terrible condition. I'll let, uh, Dave address that, we have looked at it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the, uh, the facility at Stengel Field was built in nineteen fifty-three, the last time we did a major upgrade was nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, we did an analysis of it in two thousand and seven. Uh, that analysis shows that if we were to fix the existing facility, we're looking at, at least a four million dollar project.
Okay, does it make any sense to improve bleachers, bring them, spend this kind[1797.54] of money on bleachers, when eventually in long-term CIP, we should be replacing our facility? I'm trying to justify moving the money over.
Certainly. Councilman Weaver, we evaluated that, and that's why we chose this, this account. The repair to the bleachers is a temporary patch. The bleacher structure is part of a wood frame structure that's bolted into the roof, so each year, the, those bolts work their way loose, create leaks in the roof, which then allows water to penetrate the structure, further damage the structure. So it makes absolutely no sense to repair those bleachers and have them on top of a deteriorating structure that has termite damage and other structural damage.
Is the structure still safe, or baseball games to be played in it?
It is at this time, and we continue to-
As long as you do the patchwork.
-patch it, as we're, will be doing this month.
Do you think any of the monies, because I have my own ideas on where the money should go, should, any of the monies been, be kept back to do further analysis, structural analysis, whatever? Or have you completed enough that if we, if we came to you and said, "Put it in the CIP," can you give us a reasonable number based on your review?
We could, we could.
So you really don't need any of the money at this time, or those, if we want to put public safety higher? Like, you have enough money to do the patchwork?
We have enough funds to do the patchwork. There's additional analysis to do in terms of ADA improvements for the entire facility that goes beyond just that structure. Once we begin spending that kind of money, we trigger ADA requirements for the whole field. And this is a large structure, it's twelve thousand square feet of bleachers, eight thousand square feet of building, and it's, it's, it's got a lot of components to it. So we'd feel comfortable moving forward, we'd probably spend some additional money on ADA, but we'd probably take that out of another account and come back to you with that.
We did spend a lot of money last year doing the patchwork, welding and that type of thing. I'm not sure we're gonna need to spend any money this year, except if there's some ADA issues.
That's why you have them in here. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Aker and Mr. Chapchan. Are there any further comments from the council? Mr. Yusefian.
Question from either the city manager or parks director. There was a million dollars that was collected last year, or sometime this year, from affordable housing project that we did in San Fernando Road. What has happened to that million dollars?
Mr. City Manager.
Let me respond, because Mr. Yusefian, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Yusefian, you're thinking is going along exactly the same lines as mine. I happen to turn open the adopted CIP budget to see what we have in there for park and library development impact fees, and in oh-eight, oh-nine, we have about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars budgeted. You do have two projects in particular, that one and the one that you are currently working on the entitlements. Each of which provides a million dollars, although I think, and I recall, that was fifty percent at the time that they pull their building permits, then fifty percent at the time that they actually get their CFO.
I think they were granted one-hundred percent at CFO.
A one-hundred percent CFO. So they, so they might not fall in the next fiscal year, but they might fall the next fiscal year. We probably should, with those two projects and the likelihood of some housing projects downtown being entitled, we probably need to update the resources side of the CIP because we probably have some available funds there. And what we can do is take a look at those numbers and their timing, and then come back and bring back these projects again and attempt to readdress them.
Councilmember Quintero.
I have some questions. The installation of the guard station at the entrance to the park, sixty-five thousand, so that's gonna be what? What type of structure are we gonna have at-
Councilman Quintero, that would be at a different stage. At this point, we're not recommending that right now. With the addition of more park ranger presence there, I think that will take care of the issue. I think once we get into the installation of that park's kiosk, or whatever that may be, then we have ADA issues, running conduit, that type of thing. So we could come back with our recommendation.
Then at Car Park, the security fences and gates along the north-south and proved existing fences, so that means that at the completion of that project, Car Park will be completely enclosed.
Absolutely.
So in the evening, it's closed, and that's it.
Yeah, and I think that really will help. We've seen, you know, graffiti and vandalism, we come in, we repair it, and the next day there's graffiti again, and they're getting in there at night. So it may help to close that park earlier and put some sensors in, motion sensors.
I know, that's the way to go. Then the anti-skate improvements, what are that, at Car Park?
You know, I think the basketball area that we had placed concrete on, that's become kind of a magnet for the skateboarders. And my thought maybe is, we just take that out and just put grass, that way you can't skateboard. So we may not even need that, that cost there. I think that may be a better approach than trying to put some mitigating measures there for the skate park.
Okay, then Griffith Manor Park, installation of lighting fixtures and so forth, this is sort of the first phase, and will eventually will be the total rehab at Griffith Manor, right?
Absolutely. We're doing some master planning with the community right now. And I think the upside to Griffith Manor Park is we do have some GRA money, specifically earmarked for Griffith Manor Park, so we can take that money and utilize it for the upgrades of Griffith Manor Park.
Any idea when Griffith Manor Park's master plan will be completed?
Dave, you're doing the master planning on that. When do you think you'll finish?
Frankly, I don't have a firm handle on a date on that. We're really concentrating on Pacific Edison Pool and the ARC project right now. We did have a meeting with one member of the community who's kind of a spokesperson, and our goal is, with the new fiscal year, we'll have our part-time staff working again, and we'll be able to focus our energies on that. So I'd like to say we'll have it done by the end of this year, but I wouldn't guarantee it.
Okay, but the money's already been set aside, so we're ready to go.
Yes, money's set aside.
And Mr. Weaver.
Yes, can anybody tell me, since we made the changes at Brand Park, the police activity that has occurred, has it gone down? Is it still the same, or what?
The statistics that we have aren't-
Refined?
Currently up to date on a month-by-month basis, but the discussions that we've heard so far is that things have improved, and we haven't seen any violent activity at that park.
One concern, because I've received a few emails, I don't know about my colleagues, saying we ought to put every resource in the Brand Park, we should be listening to our residents and do what they say, and I thought what we had done, it helped the situation there to a degree already. That's what you just have said.
Councilman Weaver, that's our understanding, and that's what prompted us in discussion with other staff members to propose the temporary pilot location for the rangers there, and then their coming and going from that location could create a greater presence, and also exploring the viability of assigning one of the part-time rangers there during peak hour periods.
A follow-up question then, on that. Do you then think, if there is improved presence there, that all the resources that we're putting in the Brand and Car should be exclusively there and not to any of the other parks at this time?
Um-
Sharing it out, because-
Sure.
-all the parks need some help. This is where you want to put them?
That's our best estimate at this time. Certainly, we could, we, the fencing of Car Park seems to be essential in securing the park at night and preventing graffiti vandalism. The, we could hold off on some of the elements on, on Brand Park and, and see how that works. One of the issues at Brand Park is, although these are all positive steps, is the intensity of use at that park. It's an extremely popular park, intensely used.
What I'm getting at, if you took the tree trimming out of both, that's twenty-four-thousand dollars. You've got Chess Park, Griffith Park, Maple Park, Palmer Park, all needs something. You think the best use is to trim the trees in those two parks as opposed to some additional lighting at one of the other parks?
Councilman Weaver, we do. Trimming back those trees, the canopies on those trees are not touching-
Try and look at priorities.
And it has the effect of creating improved lighting at those locations by raising those canopies and thinning them out, and has the effect of creating a sense of more light, greater, greater safety. So they get the intensity of the use that really seems to need our attention, and that's why we focus there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Quintero, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, speaking of intense use, how about Pellicani Park? Because that place is, whether it's baseball, the park itself, it's, what do we have on tab for Pellicani?
Um, we, Councilman Quintero, we just finished a restroom upgrade at Pellicani, as well as Glorieta and a couple of other parks. So at this point, that's, that's all we've done and all we have planned.
Any lighting issues at Pellicani that we can address, or?
It's pretty hopeless.
Councilman Quintero, not at this point. I think the biggest issue for Pellicani is overuse. Again, it's just the fields, the fields are so overused that we need to take them down and resaw it and get that back up. It is heavily used, like all of our parks, really. But we haven't had the type of issues at Pellicani that we have in some of the other parks. And sometimes that, the use is a good thing because it keeps the bad element away. It's one of the best ways to keep the bad element away, and I think Pellicani with the little leagues and some of the other uses has done that. So we haven't quite gotten the vandalism at Pellicani that we do at Car Park.
Councilmember Yusefian.
I understand that you're only asking for seven-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars for this project, these two projects. I have no problem with these two projects, I think they're fine, they need to be dealt with. All the other ones on the other pages are just projects that we don't have money for, but as Mr. Starber talked about, in next year, or year and a half, we may be ending up with at least two projects, I know for sure, that's gonna have at least a million, two million dollars coming in, so maybe we can deal with those, though. The only thing I have an issue with this one, after listening to the ranger, man on the, you know, the, the man on the field, I would say, you know, if he doesn't feel that they need to have a station there, maybe instead of having the station moved in there, we should maybe use that money to hire another body, or part-time body, or whatever, increase the body, and so they can do a little bit more running around instead of putting it into a structure or a temporary facility that you move from type there to there.
Councilman Yusefian, that's certainly an option. Our thought was, you know, have a temporary ranger station there, have several cars, there's always a presence there, but we could just hire someone to just be at Brand Park at this point, maybe even drive down to Pellicani and back. Any presence is better than no presence at this point.
Oh, that's what I was thinking.
We thought we'd try it on a, on a temporary basis, see how it works.
A man in a car can deter more than just a building.
Right. But we'd like them to get out, walk around.
Councilmember Weaver.
Yeah, a short one. You hired a body, now you have ongoing labor costs. This is more like CIP, you do one time in and out.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Where do we stand? Mr. Weaver.
I'm comfortable with it. I still think, regardless of what the rangers think, having that presence at, down at Brand Park makes more sense. Everything, everybody has to give in this budget, whatever we're going through. And if the offices are too closed, well, hopefully that's short-term, that we can expand and get more room for them in the park. But I think it's better there. If you're serving the downtown parks, gas is costing four hundred, four dollars and fifty cents currently a gallon. Running from Duke Magin, clear down, service south Glendale doesn't make as much sense to me, at least the way I'm thinking, than leaving Brand Park and circulating. I think, if I, I think if I was to look at all the statistics on police calls in our parks, it'd be down here, not up there. At least, that's what I believe. So having it there central, well, might not be what the rangers would exactly love. I think that's better, and then work, let's see what happens with that. If it works better, the mere presence, then we can talk about eventually upgrading the facilities down there. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it as it is.
All right, councilmember Quintero.
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Yusefian.
I'd like to make the motion on that item and let the staff go figure it out.
Councilmember Quintero, I thought-
I will.
All right, I'll make the motion.
He was in the middle of that motion. Sorry, I thought you had more comments.
Make the resolution of appropriation first.
We have a, we have two motions, we have a resolution and a motion, actually.
I'll move eight D one.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
This is for eight D one, councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Yusefian.
Eight D two.
Well, we already gave direction.
We all didn't, but anyway.
Well, and that was essentially going to be my point. Eight D two is actually written in the alternative. I bracketed each component of, whether it be physical changes, moving the park rangers and the like, in bracketed, so you could select amongst them. Well, you could, if you want to give direction that's different than that, or if you want to accept the entire program, you can certainly move eight D two as it is drafted. I gave you the opportunity to pull out parks if you'd like, but certainly, eight D two reflects the staff's report and the recommendation of staff to temporarily relocate, to do the, the tree work, the lighting work, essentially all the work that would be entailed under the resolution of appropriation.
All right, I would just like to have a chance to make mention the fact that I, I do not, the only part of this that I'm, I'm really not exactly comfortable with is the idea of creating a, a station or a substation or a temporary, whatever you want to call it, at Brand Park. I think that the, the presence can be increased just as easily without the structure, is my feeling. In other words, if we're assuming that the presence is going to be there simply because there's a building there, and the presence can be there, there isn't a building there. What we're talking about and what we keep hearing over is they'll, they'll be coming and going. What we're hearing from the ranger is, that isn't how it works, anyway. So it sounds like a new direction to them, which is to plop themselves down there. I don't understand how this is gonna work, to be quite honest with you, but I'm hoping to hear, hear back. But just as one councilmember, I agree with Mr. Yusefian on that point, I, I don't see, I don't see that as a, as a reality.
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
You think giving, what Mr. Yusefian said, giving direction to staff, hash this out, because this is just giving direction.
I understand that, and I'm, I'm suggesting some right now.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know where my colleagues or-
Let them talk.
Besides me are on that. I've heard from councilmember Yusefian, but in any case, I just wanted to add my two cents on it.
Mayor Draymond, I think the important thing is more presence, and somehow, some way, we'll get more presence there, so that the community can see that there is a ranger presence there.
I just made you a councilmember, sorry. Just city manager.
I don't know if that's a promotion or a demotion, but-
It's a big day cut, isn't it? Included.
Ooh. I think that'll make a headline tomorrow.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, let me suggest that we focus on how to increase the presence, whether it's at Brand or at other parks, that would have been accomplished by moving them down here operationally. In fact, there may be ways to move them, move the headquarters operationally without having to spend money on new facilities at Brand Park, and we can evaluate that. If we can't come up with something that works without, without purchasing a new facility, then maybe we keep the headquarters where it is. Mr. Yusefian was beginning to suggest that you leave the details up to staff, and we'll work on that one some more to try and accomplish it without the expenditure on a new substation.
Mr. Weaver.
Just one, one last comment. We just went through a tough budget time, and we're gonna discuss it again here tonight. We had to cut police, we had to cut fire. It'd be nice to hire eight or ten new rangers. It's not gonna happen today in two thousand eight, in May in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, but it isn't gonna happen here tonight. This is not easy to sit up here and make these decisions that affect the safety of the people of this city.
All right, councilmember Quintero, and then it's councilmember Najarian.
How many ranger vehicles do we have? How many of the SUVs and stuff?
I think we have about six ranger vehicles. We, but the staffing also, we have four full-time rangers budgeted, and we have nine part-time rangers on our payroll. It's just a matter of how those, that the staff is utilized. We also have access to retired police officers from Glendale PD who are willing to do this type of work.
By budgeted four full-time positions, you mean you plan to fill those two open?
Well, yeah, we've had, we've had a vacancy in those two positions. We had one kid who came in and left right as he was in the academy, and the other vacancy was held vacant for a while. So it's kind of two sides of that story.
But the money's been budgeted.
Money's there, yeah. Positions have been there.
Councilmember Najarian.
I think it's important that we do maintain a strong presence at Brand Park, thinking back over the last ten years, I think some of the most serious incidents that occurred at parks occurred at Brand Park, including murders, attempted murders, et cetera. I like the idea that, I mean, there's a lot of paperwork involved in this job, that when they do have to write a report, that the, the officer is there with his vehicle- they do have to write a report, that the officer is there with his vehicle outside the station or the substation and he's there writing his report. Also, when he leaves, his vehicle is there. He said he leaves it, you know, at the site. So that's what makes it attractive to me, to keeping it, to keep a strong physical presence at Brand. But I will wait to, I guess, discuss, debate the details when we, when you come back with something.
Yeah, I think the, what I'm hearing from my colleagues is that presence is the thing as to whether or not it's in a structure there or not. We will wait to hear the input. Okay, is there anything else? We need to move on.
Mayor, may I make a motion, Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion on 8D2 as written with modification to the Park Ranger relocation to state more presence in the Brand Park and let the staff work on it.
Further assessment of increased presence of Park Rangers at Brand Park?
Sounds good.
We have a second.
Okay, I'll second.
Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers.
Just coughing, sorry.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Okay. Next item, please.
8E is Director of Public Works regarding banner request from the Glendale Sunrise Rotary for use of the city poles and light standards. E1 is motion authorizing City Manager to enter into agreement with Glendale Sunrise Rotary to permit them to install light pole banners at various locations in Glendale.
Thank you. Actually, we don't have any cards on this topic.
Although, Mr. Mayor, if I could, Mr. Rob Vogel, representing Glendale Sunrise Rotary, did want to say a couple of words on this item.
Okay. Mr. Rob Vogel, can you fill out a card afterward and leave it with us?
With pleasure. You sure you want to say something? It may affect you.
Actually, more than say something, what I'd like to do is have the people from GTV6 show the PSA that we have used in the past on Channel 6. It can explain the program to those of you that don't remember it much better than I can.
Well, how long is it?
30 seconds.
Let's do it.
Sure.
Let's have the lights, please.
Now, sit right here. Don't touch anything. Mommy's going to be right back.
It only takes seconds for the unthinkable to happen. Stop. Think. Remember. And whatever you do, never, ever leave children unattended in or around a vehicle, not even for a minute. For more information, go to notevenforminute.org. Brought to you as a public service by the Los Angeles County Medical Association Alliance and the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club.
And that has run on Channel 6 from time to time in five different languages, as are the brochures and all the information that we have. And we look forward to your support.
Full item?
I'll second, but with one question.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Do we have a policy on organizations that can do this? I just want to make sure we do.
Mr. City Attorney.
Well, I can let certainly Director of Public Works and talk about the use of our city light standards. We don't have a policy in place related to what type of organizations and the like. So the motions that I've presented to you, both this one and the past, where, for example, Harley-Davidson Love Ride requested these banners, I've made the language pretty specific that it has to be a nonprofit organization that provides a community benefit. They're either Glendale-based or they're providing a Glendale-based or a Glendale community benefit.
Thank you. Mr. Dern, did you want to add something?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to mention, what happens is this falls into a bit of a gray area because it is a city-sponsored event where we're either official sponsor, financial contributor. Those are decisions where they're made internally. That's already written up. The Director of Public Works can allow the banners to go up. Where we've had these occasions where very worthwhile organizations and programs have come in, we aren't a direct sponsor or a financial contributor. And as Mr. Howard mentioned, the Love Ride, Glendale Memorial Hospital Anniversary and so forth. So those are the ones on the rare occasion, two or three times, we bring those to council for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second with a condition. Did we get the answer?
Yeah, I mean, there'll be, I'm sure there'll be other organizations over time that'll be coming. So each one, I guess, will be decided on a individualized basis.
Are there any further comments? No? Okay. Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Hi.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
We have the next item, please. Thank you.
N9 is a hearing. N9A is Acting Director of Finance regarding proposed budget for the City of Glendale for fiscal year 2008, 2009.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. We have a public hearing. We have a number of speakers. And let's open the public hearing. Excuse me, one second, please. All righty. Let me go right to the public. We have Art Rutledge.
Yes.
Followed by Bruce, excuse me, one second, followed by Bruce Philpott and Milford Fonza.
Good evening. Can you pass this off?
Mr. Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, if you could hang on one moment.
Oh, sure.
Get you behind the microphone. And Artie, if you could.
Sure.
Three minutes, please. All right. Mr. Rutledge.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Council, it's a pleasure for me to come here. I'm here to address the loss of three police officers, of school resource officers that are assigned to our elementary schools and our middle schools. And in talking to Mr. Paze or Paz at the school district, they're going to lose also one police officer at Glendale High School. The problem is that categorically, are you really losing people or are you really saving money? You're eliminating positions. The only way you save money is that if these particular police officers are not part of your budget somewhere else. And what you're doing is directing that these police officers go somewhere else. I submit to you that there is no change as to whether or not you're saving any money. Now, during the penancy since September, Mr. Lucas allowed me to be a teacher in our homework lab. And I, I helped the students, I'm a retired attorney, with geometry and algebra. And I noticed a complete difference from the time I was at Wilson Middle School a number of years ago, when my children went there. And you know what the difference was? The difference was is that we have a sworn police officer there so that the students know if they're going to act up or take a knife and put someone's eye out, that there's someone there to arrest them. And I submit to you, gentlemen, that adding a police officer at our elementary schools and middle schools have reduced crime. And I noticed in sitting here for the last two hours that you people are concerned about presence. Mr. Weaver talked about presence at Brand Park. You're going to lose presence at all of your elementary and middle schools. And let me tell you something, these kids are not pussycats if they're, if you let them loose. I noticed a difference when I walked the halls at, I only can address the middle school, Wilson Middle School, that the kids are calmer. There's less horse playing around because they know that there's a police officer present. And I submit to you that one lawsuit, just one, where somebody is seriously injured, or if you're a parent, where your child comes home with an eye out or a serious injury. And I've sued governmental entities and I've defended governmental entities. I was a deputy city attorney for the City of LA for 30, no, for 10 and a half years defending policemen and governmental entities. I did that in private practice also.
Mr. Rutledge, I have to ask you to conclude, please.
Okay. I, I, I don't mean to be verbose, but I deeply, deeply want you to consider not deleting those three positions. And I thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you very much.
Bruce Philpott, followed by Milford Fonza.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of the council, staff and the public. My name is Bruce Philpott. According to published reports, you currently are willing to sacrifice the three school resource officers assigned to the middle school campuses as one reduction element to balance next fiscal year's budget. As has been stated, quote, "We have cut all of the fat. The remaining cuts will be muscle," unquote. The three SRO positions in the middle schools do represent cutting muscle. SROs are on the front line of defusing potential violence on middle school campuses every day. When the inevitable conflicts between students arise, students can draw in their associates and that can often draw and grow into group conflicts. If left unattended, these conflicts can spill out into the community or precipitate protracted animosity and hate among different groups. All of these unfortunate situations inhibit and disrupt the learning process. School resource officers are trained in conflict resolution and peer mediation to resolve potential problems before they get out of hand. These officers develop special levels of communications with students who are willing to notify them about bullying problems, giving the officers time to act before major problems arise. Nipping these events in the bud by engaging the principal parties and bringing them into peaceful resolutions provides character building and offers life skills to the students involved. School resource officers are engaged in prevention and intervention of potential and real violence between students every day. Rumors can build momentum if not addressed quickly. Some of you on this dies have shown a keen interest in anecdotal stories to guide you in decision-making. Although I do not support that method of driving public policy, the case of the SROs is a rare exception. It might be very enlightening to have one of the officers working on a middle school campus relate some conflict situations that they have experienced recently and diffuse. They also manage the STAR and Pell programs and if these are lost, those programs go with them. I would offer an alternative to cutting the three school resource officers. I would encourage you to take a look at another fire department staffing position that would offer up the same cost savings of around $700,000 a year. These three positions were not brought to your attention for consideration when the fire department asked to present its 5% budget reduction package. This position is the three drivers or chauffeurs for the on-duty battalion chiefs. Of the 58 cities in Los Angeles County, only Los Angeles and Beverly Hills have such positions. Neither Burbank nor Pasadena has seen a need to staff them, even though Pasadena has four more calls each year that require the presence of a battalion chief. You will still, you still have some fat in the fire department budget for next fiscal year and it could be traded to restore the muscle of the school resource officers. If you are keen to have every department, quote unquote, "share the pain" by taking proportionally from each department.
Mr. Philpott.
This will not happen. But if the council is willing to rise above the simplicity of across-the-board cuts, there is still an opportunity to continue cut and to restore muscle.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott.
Thank you.
Okay. Milford Fonza, followed by Bob Getz.
To the Mayor and City Council, good evening. My name is Milford Fonza. I'm a retired fire chief with 35 years in the fire service. 17 years, 17 of those years were as a fire service manager. I served my career in two primary cities, Pasadena and Compton, both of which have similar demographics and other fire-related characteristics that mirror those of the City of Glendale, with Pasadena having the best comparison. I'm not here to tell anyone how to staff the fire department. Glendale has always had a reputation of having a fine and effective fire department. I am here to share my professional experience regarding effective staffing of fire apparatus. As a firefighter, I was an advocate of four-man engine companies simply because many hands make light work. During my career, I've been involved in time trials deploying hose lines on both three and four-man engine companies. The outcome of those trials indicated a 30-second differential on average with four-man companies being more efficient. Throughout my career, I was assigned to three-man companies and was responsible for staffing three-man companies. Although rare, there have been times when I arrived on the scene of an emergency on an engine or truck company staffed with three men where another hand would have been helpful, but not critical to the outcome of the incident because additional resources arrived within minutes. I've also experienced calls where circumstances would have been more efficiently addressed if we were staffed with five firefighters and many calls that could have actually been handled by two firefighters. It has been my experience that those departments all across the country that staff consistently with three-man engine companies are just as safe and effective as those that can afford to staff four-man companies for both the firefighter and the public. I can honestly conclude based on my experience that it is safe and cost-effective to routine staff with three-man engine companies on the fire service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fonza. Bob Getz, followed by Barry Allen.
Mayor Draymond, members of council, good evening. I'm Bob Getz and I'm a Northwest Glendale resident. You've done a commendable job closing an estimated $10 million deficit in the proposed operating budget by making some significant spending cuts. But let me also say it's a big disappointment to see another large fund transfer from Glendale Water and Power Reserves to the city's general fund. And it's a general fund that we all know is used to pay salaries, benefits, overtime and city programs. There are compelling reasons why the public and you, the council, should be very concerned about continuing these fund transfers. Now, since the year 2002, GWP fund transfers have averaged about $19 million a year, totaling more than $150 million over the last six years. These transfers have decimated GWP's ability to make infrastructure improvements needed to bring us electricity and water in the future. As a result, GWP has had to ask for additional funds to carry out its work. City council responded by hiking electric and water rates and authorizing new bonding debt to be paid back by the ratepayers over the next several years. In essence, the recent water and electric rate increases have enabled city council to continue making annual transfers from GWP to the general fund. Under these circumstances, it's important for all of us to recognize that the utility rate increases for what they really are. They are in effect hidden or disguised tax increases. And hidden tax increases violate the spirit, if not the letter, of Proposition 218, which prohibits local governments from increasing general taxes without the vote of the public. Now, before closing, I'd like to point out that the city charter does not, and again, does not force you to make large annual fund transfers from GWP. Some of you have repeatedly made incorrect statements about this in the past. The charter does require transfers to be made provided that, and let me quote that part of the charter that is seldom seen by most people and it's certainly not stated by council very often. "That's provided that the council may annually, at or before the time for adopting the general budget for the ensuing fiscal year, reduce said amount or wholly waive such transfer if in its opinion such reduction or waiver is necessary to ensure the sound financial position of the said department of Glendale Water and Power." You have the discretion and the responsibility to waive those to ensure the sound financial responsibility of the department. Gentlemen, the time has come for you to heed the charter and begin waiving all fund transfers until GWP is able to meet its capital requirements without further utility rate hikes and city council can begin rolling back the latest increases in water and electric rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getz. Mr. Allen, followed by Mike Mulhill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguardians. According to City Manager Starbird, we need to increase revenue, not decrease spending. Bruce Philpott's given a reasoned method of reducing costs by $10 million a year. And Councilmembers Quintero, Najarian and Weaver said, no. It's only been in the last few years that Glendale's had four firefighters on an apparatus. Meanwhile, there's less than $1 million a year in structure damage. A sad day when we let the firefighters and others, other unions dictate the budget. The public comes to the city council and says, buy Rockhaven, secure Brand Park, buy open space, keep the developers out. And the council responds by doing just that. The public says, we want fiscal accountability. Change, fire. Change fire department staffing from four to three." And three council members said, "No." The city manager says, "We have to pay more to get good personnel. Today, no cities are hiring. This is an opportunity to cut back on pay and benefits. We did creative financing to repair the municipal services building by encumbering assets because the money just was not there. Here are some specific recommendations. Consolidate HR functions in the fire department under Matt Doyle to reduce redundancy. Taxi cab licensing involves three city departments, transportation, city clerk, and the police department. They need to be under one roof, just like the tree permit applications were combined by Parks and Public Works. The wellness operation covers property rental, a nurse, a doctor, contract personnel, as well as medic with equipment and drug purchases. Either lease out the function or contract with one of our three hospitals." And we take a look at the enterprise fund, we see that, my gosh, $408 million we're going to give the enterprise funds this year? I thought they were supposed to generate cash. Oh, my gosh, they didn't. They cost us $83 million. Maybe we can't do enterprise funds because we can't afford to. Maybe we can make some of these questions. By the way, I think the public really needs to know that the budget is $750 million, not the $162 million we talked from the general fund. $750 million. We need to be able to consolidate. We need to be able to do a number of these items so that we can get more cash to do as Mr. Weaver would like us to do, and that's pay more salaries to our executives. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen. We want to see fiscal accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mike Moehl, followed by Herbert Milano. Followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Moehl. Came here tonight because I read in the Glendale's news press the other day that budget cuts will be hit everywhere. And the bottom line came out to the fact that it was about $9.9 million was a shortfall, according to the Glendale news press. And the first thing I said to myself, "Wow. Isn't that about the amount of money we spent to buy the Rock Haven sanitarium?" I call that, when I went to high school, we called it OPs, other people, other people's cigarettes. And in this case, it's other people's money. The taxpayers of Glendale paid $9 million for the Rock Haven property up there. So if the people in Montrose has something called a library or whatever, we don't know what we're going to do with it. So we've already spent $9 million for that piece of property. Plus, we're going to need another three people, additional staff for the Parks Department, the Public Works Department. The city of Glendale has this grown by three additional personnel, just in the Parks and the Public Works Department. And we don't have the money, but yet we have enough money to buy that piece of property because the people up in Montrose wanted to use other people's money. That's mine, everybody in the audience who do not live up in Montrose. And I resent that. For a small few people, they wanted, they convinced you people up there at the dais to vote for it. And we're now, for $9 million, we could have go ahead and have more schools, the police department, fire department. They're complaining right now that the middle school need support. $9 million. How many services we could have had on our budget today? But no, you people, councilmen, voted to spend $9 million of other people's money for some short-sighted people who live up in North Glendale. And next year, we're going to have tree people trimming trees, spraying debris. It'll go on, it'll become a white elephant, and the city of Glendale is going to pay for it, the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moehl. Herbert Milano, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. I'm not making up for all the meetings that I've missed the last few weeks, but I do want to share with you some thoughts. Sometimes, good things come from this type of conflict, and I think that having a budget deficit allows us the luxury of looking again at how it is that the city council, or how the city makes decisions. I have been promoting for a very long time establishing performance objectives for the type of funding that you provide. Because oftentimes, when we don't do that, programs become set in stone, and they give the appearance of success, when in fact, when you look at the data, oftentimes, they don't. Let me give you one example. You remember the DARE program? You know, it was part of that Just Say No program promoted during Reagan's term in office? And we spent, throughout the nation, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars on that program, until universities and research organizations started looking at it to see if it had any effect. And lo and behold, research after research found that it has no impact. It's a tremendous waste of money, and yet today, there are still programs, it's like you can't kill the beast. When you take a look at a program like SRO, the school resource officer, and I've asked for data from Glendale High School, where three of my kids went through that school. And I've been there sometimes three times a week for years. To ask questions of the kids, you know, do you get to talk to the policemen? What do you think about them? Are they engaging with you? I didn't find a single kid who gave me a positive answer. So sometimes, we have these programs that appear to have success, but unless we really gauge it, get the data, and really understand it, we finally begin to make proper policy. Let's take a look at an objective for the city in terms of wellness. We want to promote, I guess, people to stop smoking. So I was wondering if perhaps, as part of your overall plan, including your MOUs, to say, "Look, if we're going to pay this much with regard to your health and wellness and your health insurance, why don't we do it such that if you don't quit smoking in six months, we only pay for 50% of it? And in one year, if you continue to smoke, you don't have them pay fully for that particular health?" Because at the end of the day, those costs carry forward, you know, carry for the rest of society. So if you have certain objectives, clarify them and align your internal policies, your external policies, and then measure to see if they have any success. I heard many good suggestions today, but I don't hear often enough is, "How do you measure success?" And I think that once we start along those lines, we can begin to assess these policies decisions, you know, in a, I think, much more intelligent way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Margaret Hammond, followed by Richard Espirito.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I am, first and foremost, a believer that a future of our country and our city lie with the children, with our young people. And I think that they should have a good feeling when they go to school that they're protected, that they have someone to turn to, just as at home they would turn to their mother and father. Having that policeman there, that officer, I think, is very good for young people, particularly in that age bracket. And that they can have the feeling that, well, if there's anything happens, there's someone here who's going to be able to quell that problem. You know, on the other side of it, I have many friends that are teachers. A lot of them retired, but some are still working. And that is another point to take into account, that if the teachers feel that they have someone there that they can turn to, that's going to support them in a situation that might become, you know, out of hand, it's nice to have a nice, big, strong man there to say, "Hey, you know, knock it off, you guys." I know myself, I've been in that situation. Some of us think that, "Well, heck, they're not going to bother me." But when it comes down to it, you know, you've got that great, big, nice, handsome policeman that says, "You fellas, mind your business." And it does help the teachers to have that feeling, I'm sure, and other personnel at the school. As I said, aside from the young people, and I think they do enjoy having, you know, the old saying, "Carry a big stick and speak softly." But it isn't always necessary to use the stick. If you, just your presence is there, that works for a lot of people. So I really do think we need to keep those officers, the resource, on campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Dr. Espirito.
Once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. I want to talk about the ripple effect regarding the SRO officers. One of the issues, we're planning on removing these officers from the schools, but in the middle schools, we're having a bunch of students who are just developing their own sexuality. All you remember, when we were young, that age, we were very exploratory. With the issue, if we don't continue to have the SRO officers in the middle schools and in the grammar schools and in the high schools, the ripple effect is, how many teenage pregnancies are we going to have? And what is the cost of one pregnancy to the state of California, teenage pregnancy? That will continue on and continue on because statistically, we have looked at people who are on welfare, continue, their generations and prodigies continue to be on welfare again unless the chain is broken. What I'm asking you tonight is, don't break the chain because we want to save a few dollars for three SRO officers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Espirito. That brings us to the conclusion of our, well, that was last speaker card, so I will close the public portion of this, and let me go to my colleagues. I'll start at my left. Mr. Weaver, any comments, questions, or input?
Well, I think our city fathers, many decades ago, wrote into the charter about the 25% transfer rule and gave us ways to reduce it. I can't get inside the minds of our city fathers at that time, but my belief is they purposely put that in there, whether you call it a tax or whatever, to have the utilities of this city help support the services provided by police department of this city. So I wrestled with the same question years ago. It's a hidden tax. And I've come around to the fact, no, not really. It's another fee to help support the police and the fire and the services provided to the people. On the police cuts, yeah, I was opposed to cutting the SROs. I firmly believe they should be on all the campuses. I wanted to dip temporarily into some of the reserves, and I did that with the condition that after the budget is adopted, we'll immediately go into study sessions and looking for new revenue sources. I do not care to dip into the reserve funds for ongoing labor costs. We didn't agree on doing anything like that. We had to make tough, hard cuts. Everybody suffered. Every department suffered, even down to the city treasurer. I remember staff, and they cut $1,500 bucks. So everybody did. Is it fun? Heck, no. First, people I'd like to see put back in the budget would be the SRO officers because I think they do an awful lot on the campuses of school. I've been involved in two or three school boards, whatever, and I realize the value very much. No easy answer. We can be looked down upon, we're playing games, we're paying salaries. I've studied the city budgets since the 1980s, and it's very much more complex than some of you people make it out to be. "Oh, you just don't give so much money to employees and stuff. Oh, just do that." You don't even begin to understand how complicated it is, working with a $600, $700 million budget. It's complicated. And the public wants fiscal accountability, where most of the public is sitting in this room. Because I don't get emails, I don't get calls, I don't get letters. The vast majority of this people think we're doing the very best we can. So where Mr. Silverman is talking about, how the public want accountability, well, they sure aren't here tonight. I guess they think we're doing a pretty good job. So I'm comfortable with the budget, not that I like it. I don't think any of us like the budget the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, well, I'm going to start. The PAL program and the STAR program are funded, and we continue to have two SRO officers in each high school. So we're continuing to have six SRO officers altogether. And for one of the speakers, let me say that one of the most effective SRO officers that I've known happens to be a woman. And so I don't think you need a good-looking male officer in these positions because she's doing a tremendous job. She actually initiated an entire new program within the PAL structure. So it was very difficult to cut the junior high because I think they're very important. I'm particularly close to the situation in Roosevelt. Throughout the years, I used to go there. So as soon as we can, I'm for reinstating the middle school SROs, but at this point, they're, they won't be funded. And let me just say that, by the way, I mean, in these schools, remember, you do have teachers, guidance counselors, deans, et cetera. So I don't think there's going to be any riots in the middle schools as a result of the SRO cuts. And as a matter of fact, at the budget session, we also mentioned the possibility that somehow the high school SROs could maintain some presence in the middle school. We'll see how the police department works that out. Then in terms of Rock Haven, every time I hear Mr. Moehl discuss Rock Haven, I'm just astounded. It is a public facility. Anyone in this city, whether they happen to live in Glendale or even live outside of Glendale, are going to be able to go to Rock Haven and spend time there. It's a beautiful facility. I've said it before, and I'll say it again. Every opportunity that we get to buy public space, whether it's green space or whether it's a defined park, et cetera, every opportunity that we get, we should take it. We need more parks in the city of Glendale. We should take it. And then eventually, when we have a shuttle, hopefully soon, we'll have maybe a weekend shuttle that'll go to the different parks in the city. Then people won't even have to drive there. They'll be able to get on a beeline shuttle that can take them on the weekends to all of the different parks. I envision young people getting on the shuttle and going up to the sports complex, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that Rock Haven purchase, without question, was a very good, a very good idea. Then in terms of the GWP transfers, I think we are meeting our capital requirements, and I think where the GWP continues to do the infrastructure that needs to be done. We also continue to buy all of the different renewable energy projects, so we get a chance to buy the wind and so forth. And so overall, I think GWP is in decent shape.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to say that the reports of Glendale's impending bankruptcy are severely exaggerated. It sounds kind of funny, but in reality, three weeks ago during our study session, we had speaker after speaker come forward and, like vultures hovering over council, "You are the council that drove the city into bankruptcy." Numerous analogies were made to the city of Vallejo. "You're going down just like Vallejo." Well, there was a $9.9 million adjustment that had to be made. The council sat down over the course of several study sessions with the help of staff. Mr. Starbird, I think, did a great job by rounding up the executives and laying down the five the 5% cut rule. And almost to a T, they all came back with a 5% cut. So I applaud Mr. Starbird's efforts and staff and all the executives who had to make cuts within their departments, as well as the city council, that, as Mr. Weaver said, these are tough choices that we have to make, but we made them. Glendale is solvent. The sun will come up tomorrow. We will have police and fire and other city services being provided to our residents. Now unfortunately, one of the areas that we had to do some cutting was in the SROs. Now, I didn't really feel comfortable about that. These are the SROs in our middle schools. We do not have SROs in our elementary schools. We are keeping the SROs in our high schools. And I know what goes on at the middle schools. I have a middle schooler. I have an eighth grader. Pardon me for saying so. He's not an angel. He's a normal, healthy eighth grader. And I hear what goes on in the schools. And speaking to the Rosemont Middle School, which I believe has an SRO officer from the sheriff's department because it's in the county, the administrators there do an excellent job. Principal Sally Buckley, Assistant Principal Ron Sowers are able to tackle any problem that appears on those campuses. I'm not sure it's a good impression to have an armed officer amongst our middle school students. I think our GUSD administrators are doing an excellent job. I'm sure they will continue to do an excellent job. These are essentially 11-year-olds, 12-year-olds, 13-year-olds. Yes, there's all sorts of hormones. I'm not sure it's going to lead to a spate of teen pregnancy, Dr. Espirito, at that age. I'm not sure that goes on in the school campus, perhaps outside, but I, I hope we don't see a spate of teen pregnancies. But I think that is something that's not going to happen. When we do get a better budget year, I'll be happy to revisit that. But I don't, I do not feel at all that our children are at risk without having the SROs at our middle schools. As far as Mr. Getz's comments with the 20 million dollars transferred, Mr. Getz come back with a plan to cut 20 million dollars from the budget and we'll entertain it. I think cutting, cutting the transfers down to zero, if it can keep our level of services that our residents demand and deserve, I certainly have an open mind with that. I just don't think there's 20 million dollars that we can cut. I think that's a huge amount. I think we've seen some of the pain that we're feeling now by cutting just 10 million, an additional 20 million, I think will devastate our departments. I mean, can it be done? Of course it can be done. We can put positions on the chopping block. We can cut services. It's not an impossible thing. I mean, I don't think any of us feel that it's an impossibility. But I think it will severely impact in a negative way the quality of life and the types of services that we're currently providing to our residents and that they have grown to expect. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Yusefian.
First of all, I do not think that the speakers who come to talk to the council are hovering like vultures. I think they are, they are, please, I, you know, they're residents of Glendale, they have concerns. And despite one of my council member who thinks that all of you guys don't understand anything, I got news for him. Many residents of Glendale are major business owners that have done more budgeting than he has ever done in his whole lifetime. Nevertheless, they're no different. Let me tell you something. Every one of you who have a household, you do a budget. Do you know how Ginger Bremberg got to do her budget? She took the city budget home, crossed out the zeros, made it easier for her to understand because it was very similar to her household's. So she didn't look at 20 million dollars, she looked at 20 dollars. And that's how she got there. And when she explained that to me, she goes, "My boy, it's no different than what you do at home. Don't have the money, you don't spend it. Period. That's how we do our budget at home. The ones who spend more than what they have, guess what has happened to them? Their homes are being foreclosed, their cars are being repossessed. Why? They spent more than they had. That's simple math. Now, we sit in here and we try to be the smartest people on the planet Earth. We're not. We're just, we're sitting on that side eight years ago, 10 years ago, 12 years ago. We're just like you. No difference. None of us has all these fantastic ideas. We come here to serve the public. We rely on these guys who make over 100,000 dollars to tell us what we should do and what we shouldn't do and what the numbers are so we could make some decisions in your behest. That's all we do. On this budget, let me explain something to you. I have voted against the city of Glendale budget at least a couple of times because I felt it was not done properly. Yes, Mr. Getz, you're right. We do take money from GWP to balance the budget. We have been taking money from capital improvement to balance the budget in the past 10 years, 20 years. Now that we've almost out of that money, now we're in the GWP. And, Mr. Getz, you're absolutely right. When I came in here, that was the exact line I was given that Mr. Weaver just told you, which is, "Our forefathers decided 25%. And you know what? If you don't take 25%, you have to make a finding." And every year, we do make a finding. It's in there. He's right. We have to make a finding why we're not taking 25%. It was until recently, in the last few years, when I read the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey used to say. This is something that we need to talk about during the next election. This is something that we need to think. Are we going to continue to do this? Because GWP will transfer more and more and more until you hit your 25%. And you know what? If your income is high, that 25% can go up. Let me tell you the whole stirt skinny. We were 9.9 million dollars off. You know why? Because we had to make the 6.5 million dollars in raises is part of that 9.9. That's the simple math. Part of that deficit was to make room in our budget to pay the raises that we talked about today. So you don't have some of the sorrows and all this stuff, that was all part of it. Now, let me say one thing to Mr. Espirito. I also went to high school, also went to junior high, and let me tell you, I don't think anybody tried to get somebody pregnant in front of a police officer, as a matter of fact, in front of any adult, as a matter of fact. And I do believe, when I went to school, there were deans, there were teachers, there were principals, there were all kinds of people there that they kind of kept you nice and straight and narrow. So while I do say there may be some need for the sorrows, but I do agree with Mr. Quintero that, you know, you have two of them in each high school and you can use one of them on the other side temporarily and back and forth. I will tell you one thing honestly and to my colleagues and to also the staff, I don't know how I'm going to vote on the salary increases. I may not vote for them. And I don't know if I'll vote for the budget either. Because truly, honestly, I don't think that budget is balanced. It may be on piece of paper. Reality, we keep borrowing more and more. And there may not be 20 million dollars to cut, but I think we honestly need to start looking in all these departments. There are other stuff to be cut. Maybe we would have cut some of the extra money that we pay all these 100,000-plus people to go get a college education or get a degree. They need to have a degree to have a 150,000 dollar job anyway. So why are we paying for it? I would, as a contractor, never pay a subcontractor extra money to go get educated so I can pay more money to hire him. Nobody does. Why do we pay that? It's something that gets negotiated. And if you don't give it to them, then they come back and say, "Well, but these other three cities are doing it." We are one of the highest-paid cities in the state of California. We pay our people very, very good salaries. In no means anybody can say they don't get enough money. They get a lot of money. Many deserve, some don't, just like any other organization. Okay? But the bottom line is, it's not black and white. So I like to tell you the truth. You make up your own mind. Nevertheless, I listen to everyone, what they have to say, and I respect your opinions. I listen to it. I will make a decision in the end. Some people are going to like it, some people are not going to like it. But that's my point of view on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yusefian. I want to make a few comments. Is it too late to go to the Ginger Bremberg method of just lopping off zeros, Mr. Allers? Can we just do that and?
Just leave it with her.
Just leave the zeros off and balance the budget that way, perhaps? Well, I'm interested to know that my colleague, Councilmember Yusefian, mentions there's 6 million and change in operational costs, in other words, in salaries and raises. Not Rockhaven, huh? You know?
No.
I'm being, I'm being facetious, Mr. Yusefian. I, I know that's not what you meant. I was making a reference to Mr. Moe Hill and his fascination with Rockhaven. He also made a comment about somehow we could have spent the money on more schools. I'm not exactly sure how, but in any case, there seems to be some confusion there. I'll get to some of the other things, but I just wanted to, you know, this is, I'm fascinated by this. This is the same gentleman that when the, some of the board members from the Armenian Relief Society were here, asking for a, what, 3% break on some basically pencil sharpening to make their fundraiser, charitable fundraiser go through, he wanted to know why they were not washing toilets at the, at the civic auditorium. And he also seems to have a fascination with washing toilets, that groups should be washing toilets, individuals should be, should be washing toilets in order to receive funding. Let me ask some questions. Chevy Chase Reservoir, how much did we spend on that?
28.
Yeah, 25, 20 million.
My goodness, more than three times the cost of Rockhaven, but we keep going back to Rockhaven. Let's see, how about, how about the Brand Library, the rehab that we decided to do there? How much did we talk about that?
Six.
Six million? Almost the cost of Rockhaven. My goodness. How about Pacific Edison Pool? How much are we going to spend there?
Five.
Five? Wow, there's, there's a large, more.
More if I have anything to say about it.
More if Councilmember Najarian has anything to say about it.
Let's keep in mind of the.
Since, since we don't seem to have any sense of what, where these funds are coming from in, in Mr. Moe Hill's version of the world, let me also ask about, what do we spend for the San Fernando Road landscaping?
2.7.
2.7 million. What about the, what about the signage there that tells us the, the street markers that we're talking about? Any ideas?
800,000.
Yeah. And if you add that 800,000 to the money we spend each year at the Alex Theater, my goodness, that's close to a million dollars. How about the Adult Recreation Center? How much money are we planning to spend there? 6 million?
10.
10 million? 10 million more! There's the culprit. 10 million dollars. We've allocated 10 million dollars for Adult Recreation Center and there was a 10 million dollar gap. That's it. It isn't as simple as that. I think most of you know that. I think my colleagues know that and just didn't want to bother to, to address it because it, perhaps it was coming from Mr. Moe Hill. I like to address it because I have heard, believe it or not, these same comments before. I just want to conclude by saying this. Mr. Weaver is right when he says this is not, these kind of cuts are not the kind of things any of us want to do. Mr. Yusefian is also right when he says, you know, "We made some plans and some predictions about where we thought things were going to be and guess what? We were short." Somewhere between those two extremes or those two positions lies the everyday work of having to come in here morning after morning after morning after morning, working on the, first, the capital improvement budget, budget study sessions for months and months, and the budget study sessions related to this budget. Some cuts had to be made. You know, we talk about choosing between children. Well, it's not an easy thing to do. All of the public safety assets that we've looked at, whether fire or police or emergency medical services, are all important. But you know what? So are, so is the Brand Library and so is the Chevy Chase Reservoir and, and so are parks and so is the Adult Recreation Center and so are libraries.
Roads.
And roads, you know? To the point that we're looking at, do we cut the libraries? $33,000 that they're using to purchase books and periodicals. Interesting kind of library if you don't have books and periodicals. You know, and so we'll have shorter hours in libraries. These are all part of a quality of life in a city. We're trying to still meet the demands, requests and, and the, the kind of lifestyle the citizens of Glendale are accustomed to, the quality of, of life and the, and the services that we provide. I also think it's unfair to point at the city manager and simply say, "Hey, he's talking about reserves. You bet we're talking about reserves." But not just reserve, not, I don't mean reserves, excuse me, revenue. You bet we're talking about revenues. And not just revenues, spending and revenues, expenses and revenues. And we do have to look at that as well and we're going to be. We're going to be holding some, some study sessions on that, in case you missed that at one of the previous budget study sessions. In any case, I'm going to support this budget as it is now. Not happy about it in many regards, but I believe this is the best we're going to do at this time. So with that, if my colleagues have anything to add, we'll hear that now and then we'll move on. Mr. Najarian.
I do. And I'd like to keep an open mind about this as well. And I know Mr. Yusefian does a lot of work and number crunching and I would ask him that during the next week, if he has a better budget, if he has a better way to cut funds or get revenues, please, don't at the last minute just say, "I'm against the budget." Share it with us, convince us, show us a better path. I might agree with you. But give us a way to, show us another path. There's been some discussion in previous meetings that staff shades the way, the numbers that they want us to see. If you've got something that I can dig into and support, I'll be happy to look at it, as would all my colleagues, I presume. But I think it's, you know, just don't come up and say you're against it. Show me where we can cut, show me where there's revenues and I'll be happy to look at this. And if we have to delay, do we have any wiggle room on this?
No. We're not like the state of California.
June 30th is our?
You have to adopt it before then, June 30th, so.
Next week is the 17th? Is that what we're set to vote on this?
The 24th, which is your last opportunity to vote.
Okay, so there's two weeks between now and, and then. Okay, so there's two weeks between now and then. So, uh, I'm sure staff will assist you in any of the detailed work that needs to be done, but I'm not, I'm not locked into this, but if there's something better out there, I'm happy, more than happy, to consider it, analyze it, and debate it and vote on it. So, that's your homework assignment.
Sounds good.
Okay, Mr. Quinte.
I love homework. Yeah, I just wanted to add, I believe that we are either not going to fill, or, and not filling also eliminate, uh, how many positions, forty-one? Is it...
Forty-one full-time. I might add that there are seven positions being eliminated in the police department, not just moved out of one program, put into another, but seven, as I recall, seven sworn positions eliminated in the police department.
Right, so altogether forty-one positions.
Apparently vacant, but they would have been filled.
Well, they're vacant.
All right. Uh, Mr. Weaver, you have another comment?
Oh, I'm gonna have new business next.
All right, we're not quite there yet.
No, but, um, oral communications.
I thought it was at the end.
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes, we did. Okay. Um, uh...
Does new business?
Yes, well, the, the new business, uh, I'm not treating as an agendized item in the sense that our action items are and so on. I, I do wanna move to oral communications next. Sorry. Okay. Um, our first speaker...
Let me just read the rules.
Yeah, would you please?
Discussion is limited during oral communications to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the, um, each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. Sorry, you're throwing me all off. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Yeah.
I'm, I'm so glad that I'm affecting someone else's, referring to it as speakers as well, our city, all right, the city clerk. All right, thank you. Our first speaker is Mike Mulhill, followed by Dr. Richard Aspiritu.
Mike's gone.
Mr. Mulhill is not here, okay. Doctor Aspiritu.
Once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council staff. I am Dr. Richard Aspiritu. Um, I'm here once again to speak about the CERT program. I enrolled myself into the CERT program because I felt that, with the information that I had, that this was a touchy-feely-good PR program, especially after I got the report from the city attorney's office that the Glendale Fire Department spent seventeen thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents in overtime last year for the CERT program. I personally feel that the CERT program did not benefit me very much. I think out of the twenty hours, uh, and the time that I spent there, I probably learned something in one hour. However, I think this is a valid program. It is a needed program. It should continue, and I think all the members of the city council, and especially the high school students and college students, should enroll into the program, even though they do not teach CPR or first aid, and in their literature, they say that if you have a burn, don't treat it, just put on some ice packs. If we have a natural disaster such as an earthquake, and we are down on our electricity for forty-eight hours, where are we gonna get the ice packs? It was briefly touched on, uh, for about maybe fifteen minutes in the class, that we need to develop our own community teams and not rely on the fire department, and I believe that's true, because if we did have a result of a major disaster such as was published by the geologist, we would be severely handicapped. Um, I personally did not become a city volunteer for the CERT program, because at the end of our class, the individual instructor said, "We want you to become a CERT program, volunteer CERT program member, so that you can make sandwiches and answer the telephones." Um, didn't like that too well. I met, I am presently meeting with the Disaster Response Preparedness Team Coordinator, the EMS T, EMS Coordinator, and the Community Educator to help improve the program. Today I spoke with the EMS Director about the Lilly, Taylor, and Pasadena kits. He informed me that they have twelve, and I informed him that the cost of that is approximately three hundred and nineteen dollars by Taylor. These kits are kits designed, and they actually are cyanide antidote kits, and Taylor is online and pharmaceutical, and they're online for, and you could buy them online for three hundred and nineteen dollars. Once again, I would like every individual, members of the city council, to enroll into the CERT program. Um, and I strongly urge the students at the high schools and the members of the college to join that program, uh, because if I had the offensive descent to fly from Hoover High School and the cross-country runners, I'd move buildings up in northwest Glendale. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Herbert Milano, followed by Barry Allen, followed by Isabel Valencia.
No, no, no.
No, 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 it's Mr. Allen, followed by Isabel Valencia.
Here next, here after, Mr. Allen. Don't go too far.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and city attorney. The, uh, the very word secrecy is repugnant in a free and open society, and we are, as a people inherently, historically opposed to secret societies, secret oaths, and secret proceedings. John F. Kennedy. In October two thousand and seven, the GWP gave five thousand dollars to Dreaming of Roses, Inc. Please provide the documents showing the details of that transaction, from the request to the approval of the payment, including the cancel check showing when and where the payee deposited those funds. Response: The city refuses to provide the cancel check for five thousand dollars paid by the GWP to Councilmember Weaver's business, as it involves private information. Excuse me. Please be advised that the cancel check is exempt from production pursuant to Government Code Section da-da-da, as related to personal financial information of Mr. Weaver. Accordingly, the public interest in nondisclosure far outweighs the public interest in disclosure. The thefts are our tax dollars. There's no reason for the GWP to market their services. We're a captive audience for electricity and water. A request for city records regarding telephone usage and Mr. Weaver's calendar was turned down because those records that we sought were privileged pursuant to the deliberative process, privileged, and will not be produced. And by the way, I would suggest that the city not destroy those records, as it could be, uh, as time goes on, an obstruction of justice. And we also asked that the city provide the records, excuse me, the report of the asthma, and I'm one of them. The city attorney, indicating the city clerk and/or the city attorney have enforced the Political Reform Act of seventy-four as amended with regard to complaints about officials at the local government, including but not limited to failure to file forms on a timely basis, the accuracy of those filings, and penalties issued for the failure to comply with the aforementioned act. And what was the response? There are no records. Now, personally, then Van Guardians has complained on several issues, and no action was taken. Now, I think that there, there's gotta be a time for accountability, and the more people that look at the information that Van Guardians provides, we will get that accountability. If we have to do it on a day-to-day basis, we'll do it. We will examine all of the information, and we will report to the public, as well as to the city council, uh, even though that was something that was repugnant to a city council member sitting on this dais today, that we would report, who would we report to? We report to the public. We report to the people who want accountability, fiscal accountability and responsibility. Thank you, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Uh, Isabel Valencia, Isabel Valencia, followed by Rita Unikian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council member. How are you? Um, thank you for this time to, um, let me explain to you that I got, um, uh, in touch with a lady over here, and then I shared her fight, uh, tried to get rent control in the city of Glendale. I lived in this Glendale for twenty years. I work over here, my kids going to the school, and I was living in other different, uh, situations. But the most important thing is calling my attention, and it's pinching me right now in many families from, as me, like a Spanish family. I never been in any of the, um, health system in this country, because I have two hands, two arms, two legs, I work, and I don't need, and I believe that those kind of help is for people that they really need, handicaps on any other impediments that they could have, and they cannot work. I was working hard all my life, and I teach the same principles to my kids with my example, not just to say it to them. And then it's very, it's very hard now to find that with the crisis that we're going through with the gasoline price and all the issues that everybody knows, and on the top nobody pay attention on this extremely out-of-control increase the landlords, the rents in Glendale. Nobody pay attention. I don't know why. But I was living always in here in Glendale, I was paying, it was a free rent, but the landlords didn't get that much out of control like now, three hundred, four hundred dollar in one shot, because they have their own excuses, "Oh, I have to pay taxes, I do this," increases everybody we have. Like he say, we have to, um, we have to be spending our money wisely. I'm not crazy spending money, but I'm, I'm refusing to pay four hundred dollar in just one year, because he say he have right to increase that much. And now it's not just me, it's a lot of people in these same situ, situations, and I don't know how we gonna do it, but I'm start the fight now, and I really need that you guys pay attention in this. They said, "Oh, we never have rent control in Glendale, this is gonna be so, why not?" LA has, Santa Monica has rent control as well, and it's a very nice and very good place to live. This is, it has to be, um, maybe with, uh, in different way, not like LA, but maybe in a specific way for Glendale. But this need to be stopped, because it's something very important for us. It's something like, we, we cannot choose, we're not gonna go and live on the shelters. We work, we have to pay for our food, which one is so high too, for different and other reasons, and the housing is gonna be out of control as well? I don't think so. Those people, they start to buying property, property, because they know that they nobody control. And I'm not in Section Eight or other help, I work for my money, but I believe that nineteen sixty, uh, or older building cannot purchasing for two bedrooms, one bathroom with no air condition, no, no security at all, the same, they wanna reach the same price than the brand-new buildings, which one is different, but you have some. When you live in the old apartment, it's high note big and more ventilation, more windows, but you got the brand newer with the central air, but there is another defect which one is, you can put only one bed, that's it, in the bedroom. Who approve all this, um, engineers, developers, those kind of apartments? I don't know. But the thing is that we, we refuse to more increases in the rent. We, I'm gonna start to help her and her campaign, because I believe this must be to be stopped. Please. I would like you to pay attention that, in here in Glendale, we live a lot of people that is in the same situation, and I don't think we, Glendale City has to pay attention on other things like buy more parks or put more money in library when we don't even have a place to live, because we gonna start to be like a gypsy, try to shop around, "Okay, over here a hundred less, over there a hundred less." I don't think so, we don't deserve that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Valencia. Rita Unikian, followed by Patrick Massey.
Hi, how are you? My name is Rita Unikian, I have lived in Glendale since nineteen eighty-nine. First of all, I am single parent and have volunteered at the Glendale Schools for twelve years. The reason of my concern is to ask the city councilor members, please, to please consider looking into rent control, especially for our low-income resident in Glendale who are struggling to make a living. I have hand out that I needed to distribute to Glendale residents to sign and support my cause. I think I'm little bit, I'm speaking English, because I don't have a translator. I hope I'm better speak English, because I like speaking English language, uh, my councilor members. Last time, Mr. Harvard, thank you very much, you helped me for that paper, give it to me, because I'm confused, follow which rule for rent control. I know it is rent control is very high for me, because I'm not very, very good to speak English, but I'm very respect woman, I'm very proud of, I'm live this country, and I know it, this is very good for everybody for another, because I'm Iran, I'm come here, twenty-two I M C for American people, for which people is their freedom and talk, and this is, I'm proud of that. But all the time I follow, I'm lesson my United States people, because I know it's for the best people, and careful for understand for everybody when it's come this country and live together and understand and help and respect, and this is a long time for my country. When is my Iran is fight, I'm understand for, this is all very good for United States. That's why I'm very proud of for United States, I'm citizen, and believe me, my, um, Mr. Dry, Dry Man, I'm very care for my Glendale, I know it, I'm resident, I'm not very, very good to speak English, I'm not go for same you for learn, but I'm, my heart, and this is very care for my city, my people, for school, for city, for everything, because I'm very proud of, I'm live Glendale, and I know it, you help for Glendale is very respect and very, um, very care every officer and everybody for when it's work for city and district and office department, officers. Mr. Police, when I'm, you told me for this paper, I'm very far along, I'm call for bar association, Santa Monica, and that guys is toward me, "Mrs. Rita, you not live Santa Monica, I'm not help you, you call Glendale Bar Association." Then I'm call, I'm little bit speak English, but guys is said, "I like it, when you tried, you talk, speak English, I like it, you talk to me." What's going on? I'm said, "This one, this one, I'm follow my city and give it, uh, sorry, I'm not very, very good, um, explain." Is they give it to me for chance for signature and, um, attorney for petition and ballot? This is, I think is the light is there come soon for Glendale rent control, but I'm very proud of, I'm very happy for this time, for these people is here. I know it is little bit hard, somebody is like it, rent control, somebody is not like it, but when you lesson people, and... when you lesson people and you understand people for two, three or two months is come here and talk to you and you think, I think is the signature I have, and then I know it, you help me, I'm very proud of you, I swear God, that when it's I'm talk to you, my Mr. Dryman, and I'm very proud of you because you the best, and I hope you very soon when I'm signature give it to you, sorry, I don't know, I don't know, this paragraph is okay or not, because I know you the first star for Glendale, and I hope you help and everybody for help me, God bless you, thank you, United States.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Unikian. Patrick Masahy, followed by Alexander Tomraz.
Mayor Drayman, members of city council, I do have some pictures to show and I've already signed the agreement with Mr. Wells.
Mr. Tomraz, if you could have a seat for a moment.
I do apologize for delay.
This is good to Mexico.
Yeah, I guess next person.
All right, why don't we hear from Alexander Tomraz, please? I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I am Alexander Tomraz, a poet. My English is not so good, but it is understandable and maybe it is meaningful as well. I am talking about rent control. The rent control is the main problem of Glendale from my viewpoint. If you could be able to solve this problem, it is as to sort out the family problems, it is as to sort it out business problems too, and most important of them, cost of If you consider that by increasing the price of a stamp, by, if you consider that by increasing the price of a stamp for a single cent, cost of living rises too. Then imagine by rising the rents, dollar fifty or often $100 per month, what terrible situation will be happened to low-income people. I think there is no other way for them to hit their head against the brick wall. Have a look to entire Glendale, how many schools and kindergarten's are there? If there would be 50, then imagine how many children and students there are in each education center. I believe 500, more or less, that total would be 25,000 at least. So much youths need dwelling to live in future. Consider by so much increasing in house rent, soon or later, what will happen to them? I think they must be so much rich that if they couldn't dwell in Americana, they must reside in the air. However, increasing house rent, causes cost of living, and by rising cost of living beside of hungeriness, increase of crime is the most important point that we have not to forget. I spoke about youths, but not about aged and retired and sick people that you have to pay serious attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomraz. Mr. Masahy, how are we coming along with our technical issues?
Thanks to our city clerk, we're almost there, it's trying to load, there it is. Mayor Drayman and members of the city council, my name is Patrick Masahy, I'm a Glendale resident, if you can have the lights turned off or turned down just a bit. You know, the interesting thing is, some of you will recognize these pictures because I showed these pictures to you four years ago. These are freeway sound walls from Orange County, this is near the Euclid exit on the fly freeway. And as you can see, on an incline, they've done a great job putting 10 to 12 feet tall sound walls. And when I brought this up, I brought it up for the project that we are now working on, the flyover project at Fairmont, and I said, look, in Orange County, they can do it, we should also incorporate the same ideas here in Glendale. If those folks in Orange County can have a peace of mind with these sound walls, we also deserve it too. But when we met with Mr. Bagdanyan a couple of days ago, he refused to call it a sound wall, he said, what you see on the mock-up downstairs, which he had actually brought in with him, is simply a median that's only gonna be about eight or nine feet tall. He didn't wanna call it a sound wall. I said, you know what, not only did I bring this up during the Transportation and Parking Commission meetings, I came to city council in 2004, this is from April of 2004, and I discussed it with you guys. And the fact that city staff members never even considered this is a sad situation. And these pictures, as you can see, are showing the sound wall and what a great job they done in Orange County. As you can see, the incline can also have a sound wall, which we have always been asking for, and we want the sound wall that you guys are proposing to be longer, meaning going beyond San Fernando Road, which can easily be engineered, there's no question about it. But Mr. Bagdanyan doesn't accept that for some reason or another. And this is proof that, you know, you can have sound walls on a bridge, on an incline, and you can also have a sound wall, this is a bridge, as you can see, and this is a very busy street, as busy or maybe even more busier than San Fernando Road, and it has the 12-foot sound wall going over it. But the current project proposed for Glendale, you're gonna stop that nine-foot wall right there on San Fernando Road, and you're giving us bunch of railing here, which we don't want. Railings don't block the sound. So, I brought this up four years ago and unfortunately staff never listened, as always, and now I have to come back to you and show you this again. It can be done, you can extend it beyond San Fernando Road and give us a peace of mind, and that's what basically we want when it comes to this sound wall. Let me show you something else here which is interesting. You can also have a sound wall on a on-ramp, a twisting on-ramp, and it can easily be done. And, you know, they've done such a great job in Orange County that I have to show you these pictures to prove to you that what you're giving us is substandard for the flyover. You guys need to go back to Caltrans, discuss it with them, and come up with a better design. Not a nine-feet-tall sound wall, but a 12-footer that they have in Orange County, okay? And again, I hear things like, well, engineering has to approve, well, engineering in Orange County approved it, you know, it's the same earthquake zone as Southern California, they approved all this, you can do it in Glendale too, okay? So that's basically the gist of it, and again, showing you that it can be done, and this is showing you, basically, we're talking about 17 blocks here, which is telling me this thing is at least 10 feet, and Mr. Yusefian can correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong, but you're looking at a two or three-feet base here and then you're looking at about 17 blocks going up. This is a very substantial sound wall, it's a nice one too. Now, we're not asking for the same sound wall because these are expensive, but we're asking for something with the same height. It could be regular blocks, you don't have to give us, you know, the fancy blocks. Last but not least, you know, we heard some interesting comments here tonight, and Mr. Arun Nijarian, frankly, you should be ashamed of yourself for calling the people that wanna speak in their city vultures. You owe the public a major apology for those words, okay? And, you know, you've been ranting all your life about, you know, the third paragraph on the resolution, and sir, you were part of that bogus committee that was made out of 15 realtors and developers, and you gave us the headache on San Fernando Road that we're seeing right now. So for you to call us vultures, you owe us a major apology, shame on you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Masahy. Mr. Mohill is back, and I want to afford him some time if he, if he wants to come forward. Sorry, we missed you on the go-around, Mr. Mohill.
Well, you know, I was so upset with my previous presentation about the budget that I just left the council meeting. And I came home and my wife says to me, Mike, she says, what you came to talk about, which was the Americana, how can you didn't talk about it? And I sit here and I said, well, I says, they talked about the budget, and I said, how much short, there is no money. I said, only thing I think about is Mr. Drayman and Brock Haven and how much money we're giving to other people's money again. And then she says, they didn't say such nice things behind you, about you, they said it behind your back. So I'm gonna let that go, and I'm gonna say some nice things, Mr. Drayman and city council, about the Americana. Generally, people come before the council and they always have something they want from you and they criticize you. On Thursday, June the 5th, I wrote a letter to the editor of the Glendale News Press. I'm not sure if you all read that by any, or aware of it, but a lot of people have not seen it or heard about it, I'd like to read it, take a couple of minutes and read it. "Community Commentary: We Should Be Proud of Glendale," by Mike Mohill. "I'm writing in regards to Dennis Villa's letter, first the Chess Park, now the Americana, mailbag, May 23. Speaking about sour grapes, Villa has as much vision as the people who still rely on a VCR, a phonograph player, black-and-white TV, wooden skis and tennis rackets. I am sure he was one of those citizens who never supported the idea of the Americana on-brand from its inception. Does Villa remember Brand Boulevard before 1976, when it was honky-tonky, similar to Hollywood Boulevard? Also, does Villa remember when there was no Glendale Galleria? People would find other places to shop and give those cities what should have been Glendale's tax income. Does Villa remember that new owners of the Glendale Galleria, General Growth Properties, were repeatedly against a new shopping center next to their property? That battle was won by the citizens of, by the citizens of Glendale voting for the referendum in favor of the Americana. General Growth subsequently lost the lawsuit brought on by the Americana developer, Rick Caruso, the visionary, in which General Growth had a judgment against them for $90 million, of which $15 million was for punitive damages. Now the Glendale Galleria is an embarrassment with a tacky banner, which I believe the city is not going to allow to remain across from the stylish Americana. Instead of General Growth forming a partnership with Caruso, we have two business entities not competing with each other, but actually compete, but actually complementing each other. Just look at the people who now make a special trip to Glendale Galleria and then go across the street to the Americana. Also, the merchants at the marketplace and surrounding stores have noticed an increase in sales, which all means that the city of Glendale receives more tax income. And the purpose of government, Mr. Villa, is to make a city vibrant and a place to want to live and work. The city is now experiencing new office developments as well as condos, apartments. People want to live and buy in homes in Glendale, which means that private and public properties are increasing in value. Yes, I would agree with you that the Chess Park was never a success, but I do believe that the purpose of the park was to make a large walkway between the city parking structure on Orange Street and Brand. It was never a thing of beauty, but a function of an idea to move traffic. Perhaps with the new sales tax the city will be receiving from the Americana and other merchants, our city can now think of a new usage and just maybe Caruso could assist with some visionary ideas. By the way, I do believe the Chess Park was a city planning ideal with local citizens' input. On the other hand, the Americana was a partnership with the city of Glendale as well as Caruso and his company. Caruso has an outstanding track record in assessing what people want and enjoy."
Mr. Mohill, I have to ask you to conclude, please.
Okay.
Get to the good part about the city council.
And guess what I'm coming to? Hold your horses.
If you'll indulge me, Mr. Mayor, it's been a...
You like this, it's all about you guys, I'm giving you guys a compliment, you want me giving off the podium, how do you like that? First time in how long?
Just the last few sentences, Mr. Mohill.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Caruso, for helping put Glendale on the map. People remember beautiful downtown Burbank because of Johnny Carson and the Pasadena for the Rose Bowl and the parade. Now, Glendale will also be remembered as the Belgium community that has suddenly become so fashionable overnight, combining 21st century technology with a small-town feeling. Thank you again, city of Glendale, council, okay, for possessing the fortitude and vision to revitalize Brand and the other good things that local government is supposed to have a part in achieving. With a diverse population of over 200,000 people, the city and the citizens should be very proud to be a part of this vibrant Glendale neighborhood. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Okay.
Thank you, I feel better, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
It's all been praised tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any comments or responses? Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, I would like to see the traffic engineer and Public Works explore the possibility of extending the sound wall. I know we have one going up, but right across San Fernando Road because not only, I think, is it going to cut off the noise from the actual ramp, but it might even help the other part of the freeway, help cut some of the noise. So anyway, I think it's worth, and I know Jono's taking a look at it.
Structure modifications to the bridge.
Mr. Weaver, do you have any things to add, Ms. Nijarian?
I'd like to make it clear, my comments earlier, they are on the record, preserved electronically, but I want to make it clear that when I refer to the vultures circling the council, I'm not referring to those people that came to express their opinion and to give us their thoughts, I'm referring to those people that, whom with glee in their voices discussed the failed city of Vallejo and the impending bankruptcy of this city of Glendale. It was a metaphor, a poetic license, if you will. I respect everyone's opinion that comes before council, even with opinions that diverge and disagree with my own. However, I think, you know, those comments and the... However, I think, you know, those, those comments and the, the tone of those speakers three weeks ago, I think were pretty clear that uh, they were ready to give us the "I told you so" moment. Glendale's going bankrupt, we told you so. With regard to Mr. Massey, I'm not sure what he wanted me to apologize for. He was talking about the bridge and then San Fernando Road with the uh, the group that was composed. I did not compose that group, however, I attended almost every meeting. I think he's referring to the uh, San Fernando Road Zoning Advisory Committee. Uh, there were members uh, from the homeowner groups in the area, uh, some of the people from the area, whether they were representing Pelencone Park or not, uh, were on that list and had the ability to attend and to give their input. If they chose not to, that's, that's none of my business. Um, but certainly it was open and advertised to everyone that expressed an interest. Uh, as far, and it's ironic that perhaps um, the uh, perhaps the uh, the remedy that he's seeking with those sound walls on the flying, on the overpass, uh, may well be resolved in the MTA by a local, a member of the MTA who might be, uh, should he were, should he be of the right mind, would put a lot of sweat and political capital in to get those walls funded. They are expensive. Um, certainly, engineering uh, exists to place them there, it's a matter of the money. The MTA as well as Caltrans and our Commissioner Larry Zarian uh, play an important role in that, so karma. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Yusefian.
So should we kiss your hand now or after we get the money?
I'm happy to work for the residents, but it's-
I just did a quick calculation, that wall, uh, it's about thirteen and a half feet tall. Um, some of the pictures, the early picture, uh, the bridge, the, the on-ramp, it's basically sitting on a dirt, so it's probably transferring the load. But the others, as you look at them, I think they're gonna take a lot more engineering, based on what I saw the design is compared to what that is, so you have to beef up the engineering. I don't know how much more work it's going to take, it's gonna take a substantial amount of redesign to be able to hold all that weight up there, unless there is a lighter weight version of things. But then again, we tried that lightweight stuff uh, on five freeway for uh, what you call dream works and turned out to be a not-so-good. So, you're right. So, uh, I don't know uh, what we, we can do if there's a possibility going back to redesign or do anything, but I know, and what the cost will be. I mean, that, that's a big impact, I mean, we just barely were able to squeeze that money, and that's thanks to Larry Zarian and MTA to get us the money that we need. So if we change that, I'd like to see, I mean, before you go there, what the cost is going to be, and where would the money be, and is there a way that uh, our good fellow colleague and this, oh, I think council, maybe on MTA can even get that amount? I don't know what's gonna cost, so.
It's very expensive.
That's gonna be very expensive, I know it's very expensive.
Just keep in mind, the pictures you're being shown in Anaheim, those aren't necessarily sound attenuations as much as aesthetic upgrades that were put in. Some of those walls are to block, not necessarily to, to block the view, not necessarily to do, accomplish any kind of sound attenuation. But we are looking at the possibility of extending it over the, where we do have railing, as the speaker indicated now, and so we'd have to look at how that would affect the structure, what kind of lightweight we would use. I, I mean, sound, traditional sound wall, which is generally ten to twelve feet high, is ten to twelve million dollars a mile. That's one side, one side. So, it's very, very expensive. But we are looking at it, we're exploring it, and we'll come back with, with what we come, we come up with and how feasible it is and what it would do to the project and if, if, if we can even assemble that kind of-
I mean, there's, there's several issues that I, I need to know about. First, are we jeopardizing any of our funding? Uh, how far is this project uh, on its way?
Was well on its way.
So there's, there's a lot of stuff involved in here. And, and, and let us not forget that, with the exception of the two of my colleagues who weren't on a dais, but at least me and Mr. Quintero in conjunction with Mr. Gomez and Mr. Manukian voted to spend substantial amount of money in that neighborhood to soundproof those houses.
Absolutely right.
And no other, no other municipality does that, with the exception of the airport, because there is a airplane flying over. So this previous council has not been uh, you know, insensitive to the area. We have tried to do things that no one has ever done, as a matter of fact, I think our city manager kinda slapped our hand, saying, what are you doing? This has never happened, but we're kinda hard-headed, we went ahead and did that. In some cases, we spent almost fifty thousand dollars a household to do some of those sound attenuation, so.
Okay, um, if there's, Mr. Weaver, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the whole purpose of sound wall is because of noise attenuation studies that indicate the sound walls are justified to begin with, right? And if they're not justified, then I assume if we want it, we're gonna pay a hundred percent of our costs. There's ways of deadening sound, and you're gonna have to structurally redesign the overpasses, maybe widen them. You have construction drawings, the contractor's working, going back to square one. If you go to state of California, expect to find any money today, I would say that chances are slim and none. But you've gotta start with the noise attenuation studies. They indicate no impact, no rise in decibels, then what are we talking about?
Okay, if there's nothing else, we do have some new business.
Yes. I'd like to move that the matter entitled Pacific Bell Telephone Company versus City of Glendale at all, case number EC-045559, decompromised and settled for the following complete sum of one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, and the same is hereby approved and accepted. And the interim director of Administrative Services Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum payable to plaintiff, Pacific Bell Telephone Company, for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution by the plaintiff of a dismissal with prejudice.
Second. Councilmembers Njerian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes.
Will we adjourn?
Second.
We're adjourned. At ten o'clock.